Let's begin the committee meetings and we're going to start with budget request, Parks and Lands with Mr. Miller.
All right, time here. Did I need to give this? I didn't sign these, this just goes here to.
Oh, that just keeps going.
I have just a few minutes. Okay, I passed out copies, I think all the council has received them. Being on the park chair. I guess one thing I'll ask to correct here in a minute. But I wrote this, these should probably be more appropriate, there's three of them, worded as amendments, but I'll do each one of them, I'll say amendment instead of what I wrote which was resolution, so technically they should be an amendment. Okay, so as park chair, of course I have a long history of being deeply involved with natural resource and parks. And so, one of the first things that I went to as park chair, and with other things I've worked on, like there in Foundation Board and others, is looking at the City Parks Master Plan. So I read through that twice, I visited each of the city parks twice in the last two weeks, walked around each of the parks twice, looking at the facilities, the buildings, the playground equipment. Okay. So, and the City Parks Master Plan was written, what, I think in 2021, and it's something that as a city, since that was put together, we need to follow that plan. And I think as a city, as a whole, which when I say city, that means executive and all branches of government, as a city, I think we've been a little neglect on taking care and funding our city parks. And I've had, I think I've mentioned that before, at least individually, maybe to some, but maybe publicly, but we need to pay attention and take care of things that we have before I think we start looking at building other things. And we need to make sure we have the proper funding to take care of those things. And if you read through that parks plan, which by the way, needs to be updated, you take a look and then you summarize that. So, our three busiest parks that were mentioned, Aerial Foundation Park, Memorial Park, and Riverside Park. Most people in our community visit those three parks. They visit Foundation Park, Aerial Foundation Park more, next is Memorial and Riverside, they're both tied. Okay? So what you have in front of you is the rank and order of importance of what you feel the city parks should offer the citizens. So you have a list of that. That's what this paper is here. That is showing through the, when they developed the city master plan, what the public is looking for in our city parks. All right, so bear with I'm going to go through my speech here before the amendments. So I already mentioned in '21, we created the City Park Master Plan, it's a guide for managing its parks, and we need to make sure that we're following it and we're updating it as we go along. The city needs to look at existing and future projects to see if the existing structures can be utilized before building anything else new. My concern is making sure we have the appropriate funds to take care of what we have before we start building new. I think there's room to develop partnerships for utilizing underutilized space and staff for programming, I think the splash pad is an excellent example of that. We need to do a better job of taking care of our existing facilities. Many of the pictures and descriptions that are in the park master plan for 2021, those same facilities look exactly like they did in that plan. And so we have pictures in our plan that show things that have not been repaired since that day of 2021. So, I have a couple of resolutions here, trying to keep them in 15 minutes. Actually, they're amendments, so I'm sorry. Excuse my ignorance a lot in this process, this is the first one I've had, it's a lot to jump through, and the budget process is much greater than what I had at this, much different than what I had at the state level. I'm just used to being executive branch and making decisions, not having to work with seven other people and another whole branch of government. But, but I'm getting there. So, an amendment for capital improvement appropriations, 2024, which is the big packet that we got from our city auditor Terry at the beginning of this process. Mike Miller, Mount Vernon City Council Ward, Fourth Ward, I wish to remove the budget appropriations from 2024, count number 101.2620.51111. Recreation personnel, $3,300, and have it placed into the capital, 2024 Capital Improvement Parks Fund, 1012600.53312. This request follows the City Park Master Plan. From the best that I can gather, I talked to Terry about that, is that is a, we're paying someone to teach tennis lessons, and we've been doing that for probably 30 years, $3,300 a year, we're paying into opers for that position, if I'm incorrect, Terry, please explain to me that I'm wrong. That's been going on for years. And we are taking care of buildings, of siding, and holes in vinyl, and chipping paint, and we're paying for tennis lessons. I'm all for tennis lessons, but we got to follow our plan. The next amendment for funding change, Mike Miller, Mount Vernon City Council Ward Four, wish to have funds listed in the 2024 Public Building and Land's Capital Improvement Budget amended to reflect the more appropriate use of funds. At our prior two meetings, I discussed making sure that we are utilizing our earmarked funds, that might be a different term than what Terry uses, but our specific funds that are used for specific items, I don't think we're capitalizing on those as a city. And I think we need to do that, because I think it spreads money around that could be maybe used elsewhere, which is why I'm recommending this amendment, is I also believe that nothing should come out of the general revenue fund, and if we have a specific or earmarked fund for the, that is capable of covering that item that's being requested. So I wish to have the following funds removed from 2024 Projects PBL, 101.2500.53312. Fire Department Security Access Video System, 36,000. Fire Department New PA Alert System, 32,000. Impound Lot Roof Overhang and Gutters Repair, 15,000. Impound Lot Paint Exterior, 15,000. Impound Lot New Overhead Door with Opener, 12,000. According to, I had read the legislation, from the two legislations that were passed by the citizens to cover police and fire expenses. And, you know, I will trust our auditor to look back at that and let us know, but I believe we have the funding in there for the $110,000, that can be covered there. I also have spoken to Mr. Soliers, and I've also had a chance to speak to the fire chief about this idea or amendment that I have. And I know the fire chief, when we talked, he was willing to even do without the new PA Alert System, but I think they have the funds to still cover, covering that in their, in the 208 or the 224 funds. So there'd be no need for that, all we need to do is switch the funds into those funds if we can financially do that, and then we can leave the money in our public lands fund to use on public lands improvements and maintenance items such as in parks. I wish the above funds to be put in the municipal tax half voted Fund 208, or the municipal tax half voted, voted two, voted two, Fund 224, providing that legislation allows the funding of these types of projects. These funds should be funded by the legislation voted on by the citizens of Mount Vernon that are earmarked to provide funding for the Mount Vernon Fire and Police Departments by placing these requests in these funds and leaving $110,000 in the PBL 101 budget request to provide maintenance and repairs for other public buildings and lands that do not have specific funding. And that kind of goes along with the whole master parks plan of taking care of stuff. We need to make sure that we do a better job of that. The next amendment, Mike Miller, Mount Vernon City Council, Fourth Ward, I wish to remove the Dog Park Fund funded for 90,000 from Fund 401 administration, request capital improvement appropriations, 2024, request dated 2224. I wish to add the park core equipment, obstacle course playground equipment funded for 150,000 that was removed from the Fund 401, administrative request capital improvement appropriations, 2024, request the date 116, 2024. We've had multiple of those capital improvement requests, that's why I put those dates there. After reviewing the city of Mount Vernon Parks Master Plan, which is that colorful copy, where I rest with that here, that I gave you all, if you look at that list, I'm sticking with our plan that we created. Dog Park's not on there, playground equipment is, that's the number one item, I think team sports is next, and then individual exercise follows as third. I'm trying to follow our plan of what we developed. I've also been in consultation and talked to, is it our rec board or park board, what do we call that now? Recreation Board, I met with them last week, and then I've talked to several other community members that I know, and the dog park was a question by both groups and other individuals that I've talked to, where did that come from, that idea, and of course, I don't know where the idea completely came from, but I know dog park was listed in the master plan in small print next to Foundation Park. But I wish to present those three amendments to our budget discussion for tonight.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Number two and three, I understand, so number one was you want to move the tennis
I just want to strike that and leave the money in the capital improvement parks fund.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were moving the expense from personnel, you just want to remove it altogether.
Yeah, I don't even want to have, I don't think we need to be funding that position when we haven't, as a city, looked at what the public wants us to do for programming yet.
I misunderstood, I thought you were wanting to move the personnel, from personnel, the expense from personnel too, but you just want to move the money into a way.
Right, I want to not have that personnel move the money to be able to use for maintenance on public lands.
Question, have we been paying somebody this $3,300? Or would they be aware that we're just going to pull that rug out, or what?
I have no idea, I would say no. But I would say, you know, I'll just say it, we need to make sure we're taking care of what we have before we build new stuff. And so in any capital projects that we're looking at for any park, we need to make sure we're taking care of it. Because what happens is, it's very easy for people to build something brand new and says, look what I've done for the community, but then the community is looking, they're not, they're not, look, we're short ter, we're short memory species on this earth, right? We all know that. We look at the latest national news headline and then wake up and decide how we're going to think for that day. But the problem is, is, you know, we've got, when you look at visitation of those parks, the majority of people are going to parks more than three or four times a month, and they're going to facilities that are in good shape. Just go walk around softball divots and look at rotten wood on the, on the boards. We, that's unacceptable, why should we build new things if we're not taking care of something as simple and small as that, when we're not painting things? But no, that, sorry, but that's just a concern, I also have a concern, we need to follow our master plan, or change it, when we look at what parks are first, first tier parks, second tier parks. I think they're not, we're not, we're not lining up our spending with how those are worded in our parks master plan, and we need to maybe look at that. I think that's a great role, maybe to use our park recreation board, working with the city to do that, and to work with someone to do that, if that needs to take place. One that drives me, I think about every time I drive south of town here, and I understand, you know, we got the C A and C Depot, we're spending an enormous amount of money on that facility, and no one's paying rent there. I think they should be paying rent, we literally, we have people behind these buildings, behind us, and we have business owners right over here beside of us, that are all paying rent. No one's paying rent down there, and we're spending 500, 900,000 dollars there, which we've got a building to take care of, I remember when the city got that, and the B and L. But I think that from a parks perspective, if someone can show, quantitatively is maybe the right word, it's a big word for me, that they're actually bringing money to the city of Mount Vernon, and they can show that like the ADF, Jeff Gotkin crew, they presented us with a port, it shows how many jobs, how much income tax revenue, and how many businesses they're bringing to the city and the county. And so I view that, that's a fair trade, we're getting a service from that. But, you know, when we're having people that are running a small business, or aren't even, don't have a job maybe in our metro paying rent, and we have another facility where people aren't paying rent, plus we're paying utilities, that is a concern that I have for the proper, proper operation of our city parks of taking care of stuff. And I promise, I'm also going to delve into utilities. Thank you, Terry, for getting me any questions on our rental incomes over the last year, of course, that's a bigger, another time. But I appreciate everyone's time to listen to me for these 15 minutes, I think I'm about out of time, thank you.
Does anybody know the history of when we started giving, why we started giving free tennis lessons?
They are not free, they cost the students $50 apiece.
Okay.
So we pay an individual to run a tennis.
Gotcha.
Course that costs $50 per.
Is that $50 come to us?
Terry.
Or to that person?
I don't know, I've just paid it, so I don't know where it goes after, it leaves my hands.
That'd be a good question to find, or answer to find.
I've talked to people that I think have taken lessons 20-plus years ago.
Well, I think that the, I think that the tennis lessons started as part of the creation of the junior tennis court league.
There are, and there are multitude of leagues as well, so there are the private tennis lessons that I think maybe you're referring to, and then there's a Cozing Valley Tennis League, I'm probably butchering the name there, but that's affiliated with the school as well, are you familiar with that?
So we pay this person, but nobody knows that they're giving lessons?
Also, the courts were paid for by a grant, and so.
Well, it is Steve Tier who teaches the lessons that are $50.
And to Mel, to your point, pulling it, pulling the rug out from under this person, I don't know that he necessarily depends on, so if that would affect your decision-making in this process, I don't want that to like hamstring you, I don't.
Well, along with that question is, if we remove that $3,300, is this person going to continue to do this, or drop it, and then now we have kids who don't serve?
Similarly, as the former rec director, similarly to other organizations that charge a fee for service, I feel like that fee for service has to reflect, you know, if they're going to be fairly compensated for providing that service.
Well, there's also some question about what happened to the previous fees.
Right.
We're going to have to delve into that.
So, and then there are rules within the city that we, again, regarding a part-time versus full-time rec director, nobody has time to really police all the stuff that's happening throughout the city and make sure that we're getting the proper cut, if you will, from each of those, each of those registration fees.
So it may be that there's money out there that will pay this person.
Sure. Anyway, there you go.
So, um, never mind.
So what's the net difference here, the one, you're saving 90 and spending 150, where's the 60 coming from? Am I reading it right?
Yes, I think when we get into other budget capital discussion, because I just had my parks part, I have some other questions about other capital spending.
Well, he also took all of this for the fire and police, and I think he's including that in what he would add to the 90.
Right, so if there's 110 that can be put into the 208 and the 224 fund, on the PBL fund, that's 110, then that 3,300, so that's what, 113? And to put that back into the park fund, I mean, I can add, one of my biggest concerns is, is I know the parks departments already had, during just the, this intermittent time with the interim budget, they've already got a large expense that they have to pay for to make some repairs, and so he was starting $40,000 less in his budget already to get started for the rest of the summer. And I think last year, he spent 35 or 40,000 dollars on vandalism, mostly in city bathrooms. So I've got a big concern of already starting off negative 40, when we could maybe look at coding some other things differently, or coming up with money from other projects, or, I mean, I'm willing to say, hey, let's just take some more money out of the general revenue fund, to fund it. But if we can fund it within, and make better use of other funds, or make better use of other items within the current budget appropriations request, to me, that makes a lot of sense in a better government than just saying give you more money. But I think there's other where, other places that we go through, we can maybe look at.
Mr. Miller, if I may, just for context, that is a reference to the Raston Tower, which its, its lights, the FAA lights at the top have gone out, and it is not structurally sound enough for us to send anybody up top to climb it, so we will need to bring in a crane to fix that, and change the circuit breaker, or the circuit panel, that way we're not going up again to fix that, so, within the next few years. So that, we're estimating around 32 to 40,000 dollars to fix. And that is a city asset.
Our aerial tower couldn't get anybody up that high?
That, that's what we're referring to, the Raston Tower at Aerial Foundation Park.
Yeah, but I mean, our fire truck.
No, 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 no.
The aerial tower can't get somebody, so we don't have to do a crane?
Way too high, yep, yep. So we've worked with the FAA and the two local airports and made sure that we're in this, I believe it's a 90-day window of grace, but it has to be, has to be repaired.
We're into the third committee meeting's time, but, I mean, this is raising questions with me that I need Terry to answer, you know, you.
I'm done.
Can fire.
Thank you.
Okay, we are over time, we're going to move now to the next committee meeting, which is committee restructuring with planning and zoning, Mrs. Skeen.
Thank you, Mr. President, we'll keep this short, so John has as much of his time as he can. This is a pretty simple change, and I don't think that it will shift any current wards or committees under the council members that this would affect. This would transition parks and land into parks and recreation, which I think is in line with what administration is hoping to do with that, the programming and things like that, and it would shift planning and zoning into land use and development. I think that that creates more of a logical flow for developers who come into the area, for individuals who want to start businesses, or things like that. I think that the only point of conflict that came in when we were talking about the word land was possibly the cemetery, which were the original green spaces, so it makes sense to kind of fold those back into parks and recreation, because they just fit there. But I will give council just a couple of minutes, we'll try and go only till 6:10, and I will cut you off, but we'll start with Mike briefly, just questions or your position on it.
I don't think it affects the parks committee, because this is land that is not a park, this would be other lands that would be looked at as for development or business and things like that, so I don't think it affects the parks at all.
I've been through it, I'm in favor.
Janice? As, I'm just more worried about people that selected a committee, if you feel like it's not going to affect the committee you selected to take over.
It would deal more with annexations, and that would make it all within land use and development, and therefore, the parks individual would not necessarily deal with annexations, which is kind of outside that wheelhouse anyway.
Seems like it cleans it up. Sure.
Great, John, have some extra time. Thanks, everybody.
We're now going to move to Dan Emmett improvements, Mr. Ruckman, utilities.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to call Mr. Brian Ball up, going to regale us.
I think we want to get into that Google Drive.
Google Drive?
Yeah, the email is sent.
Oh, just, okay.
Yeah, we'll bring, we'll put some stuff up on the screen, so we're, okay, so, this is a mix, really, of parks, streets, utilities, the whole, the whole gamut. So, many of you have been invited to the neighborhood meetings we're having over on the west side of town, so this is the construction of the Dan Emmett Neighborhood Project, that we went through, a lot of public meetings and a lot of discussions. So, this is federally funded, and the project has to be constructed, and all the bills paid by August 1st, 2024. So we've talked about this quite a bit, but now we have to get it built. So, we're through the paperwork phase, now the construction phase. So, as we have on the map, the, this, because it's a neighborhood project, we have to do five different things. So we're doing work in the Dan Emmett Park and at the Dan Emmett School to improve the playground, the parking, the drainage, playground and our parking lot, makes a good skating rink, it's a swamp in the summer, so we're going to rebuild those areas. We're adding playground equipment that is already in place, that was done through a cooperative purchase, council authorized that, that work's almost done. The other thing we're doing, many of you have been around the city, we have a major problem in this area with the sanitary sewer, we have basement flooding, sanitary backups on a regular basis. One of the first things I got when I came here was a call for folks on, on Noose there, their basement's filling up with sewage, the, it wasn't very well thought out when it was constructed, and then the storm system is useless. So we're creating a new sanitary system and a, replacing this, the failed storm system in this area, and we're adding sidewalks as requested by the folks. So, we can kind of show, the map's a little bit hard to see, but the project is on Mansfield Avenue, we have Noose, and, let's see, Marmah, and, let's see, I think it's Northgate. So we're building sidewalks on Northgate, Noose, Marmah, we're doing waterline on Marmah, and then storm drains throughout the project area, and then the sanitary replacement, let me go over here. So right now, the sanitary is behind the first row of houses, and so it's really difficult to get to, doesn't make any sense that it's there. We're going to bring that out and put it in the road, and correct a lot of the problems with it being between houses. We're going to add a storm drain that's been requested behind the folks, the first block on Mansfield Avenue, so that's Nash up to Northgate, we're going to put a drain back here, this area is very swampy, we've gotten a lot of calls about basement flooding and just water from the road. The pipe that goes from the school over to this creek off of Mulberry Street is collapsing, this project replaces that pipe in its entirety until it becomes a stream again. So, that's the, the project has multiple partners, so we have for construction, 700,000 of federal money through CDBG, we have Aerial Foundation as a gracious partner, in that they're contributing to the, all of the aspects that are not utility related, well, except for drainage, so they're contributing $275,000 toward the sidewalks, street, drainage and park effort. Then our city utility funds are also partnering in this project. So, we are wanting to get this out to bid as soon as possible, and I think, I don't have that, oh, it's the wrong piece of paper, let me get the total price. Of course, we don't know, I mean, the idea is the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost, so we're trying to get out to bid immediately, so that we can capture the, capture the construction market while there's some availability. So we're looking, a total project, our estimate, which could be anywhere, is 2.59 million dollars. Now, now remember, with Buckeye Edition, the bids on a 1.2 million dollar job, the bridge had a spread of 800,000 dollars, so this is worth what the paper is printed on, but that's what our consultant has said, and we looked at it again today, we don't think they're too far off. Questions? We do ask you to pass this tonight, because our plan is to take the two projects that are on the docket, put them both out to bid, try to attract some larger contractors, regional folks, that give us better pricing.
I support this, obviously, and think it's really good. So one of the, I do happen to know a teacher that works at Dan Emmett, she happens to live at the same address as me, and she did mention that the, that's my wife, in case you needed me to fill that last one in.
I'm so glad you clarified that.
Just in case.
Go on.
So, they have new playground equipment, which they're grateful for, but she did mention the other day, they don't have as much as they used to have, is that, is it, is that possible that maybe Terry? Is that, is it, is that possible, that maybe tearing out some of the things we had to take out of there? The new stuff we put in, we don't have as much playground equipment. I don't know, I'm just.
I think it's a little bit smaller, but the other one had a big piece of plywood zip-tied to it, where part of it had been decommissioned, so.
Okay.
I think cost also probably has risen significantly since the first playground equipment was put in there.
Other aspect, the principal requested that the bocce ball area be taken away, because it's just like Fight Club.
Yes.
So that's gonna be removed by the school.
The teacher that I live with has said that that.
That is not, that's not what's doing that. The school's taking care of that on their own. The other thing, the, this project includes repaving, and repaving the, the, all of the area.
That'll be great.
So there's new basketball courts that are, basketball poles that have been installed. The repaving, and then the school will pay for the paint and all the activities that are happening on asphalt. So, yeah, I think that the playground set may be slightly smaller, but it has more features in a smaller footprint.
Okay, good.
So, and if you want, I do have the pictures of before and after. And there's, they're waiting on one piece that keeps coming in wrong three times. So there's one more piece and a little bit of concrete that has to be, and then they can open. I know it's all, it's got all the caution tape on it, and you can't play on it yet, and the weather's been sunny. So as soon as it rains, we'll get it open.
Yes.
You know how it works. Other questions?
Since we're talking about schools and city, what part of this playground is owned by the city and what is owned by the school?
So, if, if.
On a zoom?
You can go to the next page, maybe. It may be easier to pass this around, too. So, we'll show it on the board here. Go back to the other one. Sorry. So we share, the Dan Emmett Park, most of the parking and the bathroom, and the, this area is all owned by the city. So we'll be redoing this entire parking lot and the drainage. And then these stoves, these two drains are on city property. So we'll be running a pipe over and connecting to existing structures. Then, the playground, we will be paving that, and then the playground equipment is right here. So it's, part of it, I don't have the exact numbers of what we're spending on which property, but there's money on both aspects. And the playground right now, I think, I'll look at Terry, the PO is a hundred percent out of CDBG. So the, what we're building right now is not, there's no city funds in it. It's all CDBG funds. And then I believe that Aerial is generally making up the majority of the other part that's happening at the Aerial Foundation at the, on this, on the property. So there's, it's a, so to get a neighborhood project, you have to do five different things. And one of them is typically parks. And so the, working on our slice wasn't enough to get the grant. So we expanded it into the school property. So we're not really, in, in my opinion, we're not really spending city funds on their property. We're using it as leverage, and we have a substantial amount of grant money. With the seven hundred CDBG, and then the Aerial Foundation kicking in the two hundred and seventy-five, that's, then we will be still using CDBG funds to cover streets and sidewalks and drainage. There, there are, yeah, so of, of the general allocation, four hundred and fifty-five thousand goes, of CDBG goes to parks, a hundred thousand to drainage, and a hundred and forty-five thousand to streets and sidewalks. Then we're making our match, our match is coming in, mostly out of Aaron. So Aaron's helping us out here, because the wastewater, we're paying cash for that part. We're paying cash for the water part. And then we are putting in a little bit of money from our general fund. And then the stormwater fund is also matching up with the rest of the drainage.
Mr. Ruckman, is this your intention to suspend the rules tonight?
This should actually be for the, this should be the third reading, so.
This is the third reading on this one?
Third reading, and I'll be asking for its passage.
Yep.
Brian, one other question, and we're a couple of minutes. Does this, does this work go back to Grange at all as well, did you say?
No, that's the next project. Yeah, so this is, this is just the, I'll give you the big, it makes it a little easier to see on this one. This is our study area. So, we went, maximum, we went with Northgate to Nash. And we looked at all this, and when we got to the end, we had the community at the meeting vote on which streets they wanted fixed first. And that's where Noos, Marmah, Northgate, and this drain and the park were prioritized.
Yeah.
We talked about making Emmett, Decatur, these other streets like a phase two, but then the, the way the rules are with the state, we have to go to a different census tract or block to do a project, and then we can come back here and, I guess, twenty-six, twenty-six and twenty-seven. We could make an application at twenty-six for twenty-seven, twenty-eight construction to do the rest, the other blocks.
And I need to rephrase my question. I meant, actually, I meant Emmett Drive, not Grange. I know that's up in my area. So Emmett, Emmett would be in a future project.
Right, but we still are gonna move the sewer. So the sewer, the sanitary sewer that's a problem is going to be moved out into, into Noos. So the sanitary problems will get, we believe will be fixed for everybody. And then the, the storm, the storm building, rebuilding the sort of trunk line for sewer and storm should make a big difference for everybody. The worst flooding issues we've seen in the neighborhood is sort of between Mansfield.
Yeah.
And Marmah. So we have a rear yard storm drain we're talking about now. We'll talk about storm on Mansfield in the next week.
Yep.
Does that help? It's a little bit better. We got that. There's, there's a lot of lines on there, so.
Any other questions? I believe that does it for me. Thank you very much, Mr. Ball.
We're adjourning utilities and moving out of streets and public buildings. Mr. Severance will discuss the Mansfield Avenue improvement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Brian is back up to discuss this. It kind of goes a little bit hand in hand with this area.
Yeah, all right. So, this, this is a precursor to the bike trail. So, we're preparing ourselves for next year, when we're gonna build the eight-foot and ten-foot wide bike trail from, from Grange down to Belmont. If we start at Northgate Drive, we have, we have a low-quality cast iron waterline that's had multiple failures, even near Clinton Road. It, one day, it knocked in the basement, and then we got to buy a basement from this waterline. So, the map, the mayor and Mr. Sawyer says up, so the waterline is on the west side. We will replace it on the same alignment, we'll move over a little bit. And then there are two culverts. So the one by Dr. Price's office is in pretty poor shape. The gas line was strapped to it, we've gotten that moved. But that'll be replaced, and then there's another one a little bit south of Fairgrounds. The idea is we'll get these replaced, they will be for the road, and then the, the bike trail section will also be built. So this is a combination project, water and stormwater. The, it's about fifty-fifty, so it's, we're guessing about, but this project particularly, we're asking to take out of roads and bridges, because it, based on the budget, we would be overcommitting stormwater. So in your line item sheet, you'll see about six hundred and nineteen thousand out of roads and asphalt, or roads and bridges for the culvert work, and then another six hundred and thirty-one thousand out of the water improvement account to replace the waterline for an all-in of just over one-point-two million dollars. The other thing that we have, depending on how the bids go, we do have, thanks to Terry, we did buy the waterline with ARPA funds. So, we were gonna probably bid this two ways, have the contractor provide it or the city provide it, and we'll see if they're gonna give us a good deal on government-provided materials. If not, we'll use this for another project. So we do have all the waterline already at the shop, ready to go for this project. So that'll bring the price down, and if they don't, sometimes the contractor doesn't want to use our materials, and they want to charge us a higher price. So, we'll work in the bid to optimize that and not be giving away free waterline to our contractor. Questions? And then we can roll through, because this goes, there's the last fire hydrant. So if you, if you go north, the last fire hydrant's about, about a block north of Grange. So that's where we'll stop is, you can kind of, that's a thing you can see out there. There's one fire hydrant that will go to that fire hydrant and replace all of that old pipe. And then there will be a preparation to tie in to Fairgrounds Road when we replace, when we add waterline to Fairgrounds later. And I think, I look at Mel, this is probably on a second reading, we would ask to suspend the rules on this.
Yeah.
That way the projects can travel together in parallel.
Anybody have issues with suspending the rules?
Yeah. Oh, the one other thing that's on for tonight, while we're talking about it, if Mayor or Tanner switch over to the, the one that says highlights. Yeah, right there. So, you do.
This is twenty-twenty-four dash twenty.
Yep. So we have, this is related to the bike trail and to the culvert work.
We'll not go about page ten.
Yeah, if you go to the middle. This is asking to authorize these very small real estate takes. There's a spreadsheet, I think you've attached.
The spreadsheet with the, sort of the actual descriptions, but it says like point zero-zero-two of an acre. And I had difficulty sort of understanding what that was. So what we had Brian do was have their intern go and show you on each of these pieces of property. And how wide is that section there, Brian?
It's not very wide.
It's a couple of feet wide.
You have the, they were feeling, the intern was feeling the love for John Deere, which I couldn't disagree with. So you have the temporary, would be us doing some grading, tying their driveways back in. That property would stay with the ownership of the landowner. They would be compensated for a three-year temporary, which we'd only really need it for two, but ODOT always likes to make sure we got plenty of time. And then the green part would be permanent, where they kind of bump out. Those are some of the areas where we have steeper embankments or the culvert, culvert work. So, yeah, those are not, I mean, you've got the. So this is the sixty-foot right-of-way for Taylor. So I mean, obviously, the road's probably only twenty-two feet wide, but this is sixty feet. So if you think about that, you know, these are just a, a narrow slice on, so you can scroll through those. There's multiple pages. Every page is in there twice, because of SODA. It has different words on the page, so it's hard to get it all on one. But it, you know, that, the spreadsheet details the acquisition from each owner. They'll be fairly compensated. We're doing the full-blown ODOT appraisal process, and ODOT's folks are making the official offers and working today.
So, will we have continual care on the property that we purchased, then, for mowing and?
No. It's very similar to the, like, where we, where you, say at your house, the sidewalk's on city property, and then there's a strip of grass. That is, the city owns that, it's plotted to the city, but you have to mow it.
I just wanted that clarified.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, very similar to everywhere else in town. The one thing that, these easements are slightly bigger than we started with. And, you know, you'll go back to, we had multiple conversations, I'll look at Mike, but it was Mike Hillier, who said, hey, there, people out here have real problems, and you need to go door-to-door and figure out what their problems are. So the reason these easements are slightly larger is every person is going to get a stormwater connection, and we're going to build a drain or a connector to, they can connect their sump pumps to a city drain on each property. So, part of why this is a little bit bigger than what you may have expected is we went door-to-door, and we asked people, is your basement dry, or what do you want? And so, at the end of the day, this project will have six hundred thousand dollars worth of stormwater work as part of the bike project, because we're gonna replace all of the road drains. We're adding curb and gutter. We're gonna make sure people have a way to get the water out of their house. That's the front side of their house for, for this whole reach. And then the part south of Northgate, we're gonna be doing the CDBG project to help them get the water out of the backside of their house. So, you got really tight soils, you got a lot of clay up there. The water, you know, if you are, right here where, where we are, if you're sitting and standing in these folks' their, their yards, you're looking up at the road. And these individual culverts were, you know, you can tell where the people worked. You know, one guy worked at a tire shop, because there's a row of tires, and that's the culvert. Next person worked, you know, got a piece of culvert from a corrugated pipe, then there's smooth pipe. Well, at each junction, at each property line, you're seeing a sinkhole, because the neighbors built this, you know, by themselves without the help of the city. So, that system that would have been built in the sixties is about in the same condition as our waterline. It's trash. So, the idea is we're gonna put a consistent, we're gonna take their user fees for stormwater and put a consistent storm system in here that services them as requested by city council and the individual homeowner. So, we're taking a little bit more property, but we're also fixing a problem that they have continuously, ever since I started, brought to our attention. For one of the first things I did was get in the car with Dave Glass and go to this neighborhood and meet with people that hated the storm system right here on Mansfield Avenue. Questions?
So, they're all on board at this point? They're, we're giving them something. And so, they're all on board?
Yeah, it was the last, last fall, when we went door-to-door to talk about, after the big storm, to talk about trimming trees and cutting trees. One of the big changes we did, the first section, north of the school to Northgate, we, we've changed the trail down to an eight-foot section. We got special permission from ODOT. That keeps it a little bit further from the houses. They're closest to the road. Everybody seemed amenable. Now, possibly, somebody may have sold the house, or, you know, we're gonna be going back through this whole process and communicating with them. We met with Dr. Price, talked about the project with him just a few weeks ago. So we'll be out here quite a bit for the next, probably, two years. And the really important aspect of this, we want to launch this to where, as soon as the fair is over, we can change out those culverts. So, getting everybody locked in, getting materials ordered. We don't want to drag these projects into, when schools, we gotta, we want to try to be between the fair and school back in session. It's the major closures of this road, so. Questions?
Just a reminder, the water line up there has had multiple breaks over the years and is not in good shape.
Yeah. I mean, Mel can attest. If this thing breaks, we have a handful of houses, we pull the water back out of their water tanks, which we shouldn't do. Their hot water tanks. You've probably experienced that.
I have not had that issue yet.
Yeah, because you're not all the way, if you're all the way up the hill, there's three or four houses, I think. I look at Aaron, we put some backflow preventers on the meters, too. But that's not a solution, that's a, that's a Band-Aid.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yeah, we're gonna adjourne that and go to Community Relations of Mrs. Woods to discuss strategic plan phase two.
Mr. Mayor, are you gonna take this?
Sure. Thank you, Congresswoman and council. You all received one of these hard copies, and then you also can see it in the.
I don't have a copy.
You don't have a copy? We'll get you a copy. If you need another copy, let me know. Anyway, you, it's what you see in the legislation is what we have here, too. This is the phase two of the strategic planning. We did, in phase one, we met with various stakeholders, we met with various focus groups, did an online survey and got a great deal of feedback. Council was one of the focus groups, and we had some of the council members participate in that as well. And came up with a mission to provide modern city services with an emphasis on continual improvement, customer service, and equitable laws that support our citizens and visitors. We also, in so doing, retain and attract new investment into the community. So that's sort of our north star. We also came up with some guiding principles, a vision, a set of values. And then, council adopted that. And so what we took it from, from that point and said, okay, department heads and personnel in the, in the front lines, let's see how, what does this translate into your own twenty square feet? What does this do? What can we do that may be, you can control, that help us achieve that mission? And so, we had a consultant come in and walk us through various steps of strategic planning. And so you see, basic, these are some general goals that strategically get us closer to living out that mission and vision. And just care, just quickly, I will, we, we broke these down particularly into safety, quality and productivity. Gave definitions to those. And so, we had department heads look at, okay, what can we do in each of these? And they came up with sort of the following. As far as safety, we, from a, a city standpoint, we felt it was time that we created a safety team, a safety committee. And so we had a department head today, where we're talking, department head meeting today, where we're talking about creating that safety services committee, and then also, safety committee, and then also a services committee, to be able to take a look at our, our practices and make sure that we are performing operations as safely as possible, and that also are. as safely as possible, and that also are legal, okay, for lack of a better word, so we, we wanted to make sure that we do have a, a system in place internally, this is administrative, this is not, this would be an administrative committee. Modern facilities, we're looking, obviously, at a lot of modernization, we also want to reduce workplace errors, and one of the, one of the, one of the areas that is really making a great deal of headway there has been our utility building office, they've been doing, they've been getting a lot of screenshots from, and they've been developing cross-training and standard operating procedures, so each one of the staff persons in that office can, can do the job no matter, so, no one is in charge of purchase orders, and someone else is in charge of deposits, and everybody can do everything. As, in terms of the, the fire department, chose to focus on increasing physical fitness, time is muscle, being able to more quickly and effectively, through, through better physical fitness, they can be better firefighters, that's one of the things that they are going to be working on, both the police department and the fire department are looking at ways to reduce response time, that's another goal that, strategic goal they have. Probation department, this is something that was, I think, rather, pretty, pretty remarkable, we did have leadership training, and the, the capstone project for the probation department was to create these naloxone boxes that they did, and got funded, and they have placed them at different places around the city, so if somebody is having a reaction to an opiate and needs naloxone, they can get to it and provide care for someone who may be experiencing an overdose. Very proud of that, that leadership team. Probation also, or I'm sorry, Public Works, increasing parks and recreation options, some of the things that Councilman Miller has talked about tonight. Cemetery, we, we have a need to protect the beauty, the perpetual care, we did have some vandalism this past year, where some of the gravestones were damaged, and so we want to make sure that we can protect them. Cameras don't prevent, they only detect, they might deter, but anyway, well, we have been prosecuting people, once we find out who they are, we have been prosecuting vandals, there's a case tomorrow I'm going to be going to as well, so. In terms of quality, for the administration and support, again, one of the things that we, we like to do from a sustainability standpoint is support, support the local economy, and so vendors, I can't remember the exact number, but we have a certain percent, I think it's in the twenties, 20% or 27% or so, don't quote me on that, Cheryl, I have the number here, I'll, I'll look it up, currently are local vendors who do business with the city, and that means, that's been defined as only in Knox County, if we go surround, if we go to Utica, if we go out, then that number goes up, but we really want to try to contain some of the, the tax dollars and the utility dollars that we spend in the local community to keep that, to keep our local economy sustained, it's a very important sustainability goal for us. We also want to be, we, we have started a, an onboarding program that's, that is getting, becoming more and more, more robust, we have, obviously, the goal there is to begin early productivity and reduce the learning curve right away. The, oh, all, all departments, wherever possible, we really want to see some more e-government happen in terms of transactions, being able to make it convenient for people to be able to pay their bills or pay permits and so forth, pool passes and so forth, online, so, we don't necessarily have to use checks, the, the tax off, the income tax office, that was one of their, their goals also, is to be able to provide more online support to reduce the amount of paper there. Engineering, we've got a, there are lots, but one of, one, it's a big one, but it's another, it's a big sustainability goal that we have, is to support the active transportation plans, to create a more walkable community, and so that's why we're putting money and investment in sidewalks and bike paths and so forth. By the way, when we did the original strategic plan, Phase One, in order of priority, our stakeholders said, number one is police protection, number two is fire and EMS protection, number three is utility infrastructure, number four was transportation infrastructure, and within the transportation infrastructure, it wasn't necessarily roads that was the top, it was sidewalks and bike paths, to provide equitable opportunities for people to get to and from amenities, which also, we've got a Get Healthy Knox County program, we've got active transportation, and so, if you're on the west end, where do you go to buy a gallon of milk? I'll let you figure that one out, it's, it's, you're, you're taking a hike, and you're walking in roads. Anyway, so, this is a very important part of ours. In engineering also, rewriting of a modern zoning code, we're very, very close to getting this in your hands, Council, but we know how difficult and how expensive the cost of, of new home is, new homes are, and so we have been taking a very hard look at that, to loosen up the standards, try to get government a little bit out of the way to make it more affordable, for somebody to build a new home and look for some options. By the way, I'm hearing this from other mayors as well, as far as what they have been doing with their, with their zoning code. GIS updates is another, is another one, Public Works and Public Utilities, this, by the way, is also a major initiative with our, our comprehensive plan update, we need to know exactly where the utilities are, that GIS technician that we talked about in, in the budget meeting is going to help out with that, which I believe is, we're thinking of using storm and utilities to pay for that 50/50, good. We might also have, we might also have some creative ways to add to that, so we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we, when we get there, but this, again, this allows us to, for our staff to be able to go out and pull up on their phones or their tabs and be within a centimeter of where the water line is located, or where the water shut-off valve is, or anything like that, and so, particularly when we start talking about more development, or we talk about more opportunities for, for drawing business, how quickly can we identify this? And then if there is an emergency, how are we able to shut it, shut off the utilities and isolate that problem much more effectively? So, I'm, I'm very proud of, of our department heads and our staff for coming up, but I'm telling you what, they, they rocked this out. Let's see, what else? We also want to improve traffic flow, again, this is another sustainability objective, this reduces fuel costs for our consumer, our, our customers, our taxpayers, our motorists, and so, looking at our, our traffic signals and keeping the flow going, obviously, the rerouting of State Route 13 is, is extremely important in that, that, that elevation between the viaduct and the top of Gay Street at Chestnut Street is 60 feet. From the viaduct to Sandusky Street and High Street is six feet. It's a lot less fuel, it's a lot fewer carbon emissions, it's a lot friendlier to our, our commerce, so, we want, we are looking at improving traffic flow as well. I talked about the income tax, the law director has a, a goal in here to assist, better assist victims of crime, and so that's another, another area from our law office, probation, they're looking at also, just generally, in helping people rebuild their lives, the things that they do in the probation department. Property maintenance has had an enormously successful eight years, I can tell you this, and it will be coming out in, in the annual report, you might have seen it already from Greg, but we have had a drop of 36.7% in violations since 2018. That's economic development, and he's been doing a great deal of education, we'll show you the pictures, they're pretty, they're pretty impressive, those will be forthcoming. So, one of the great things that this council did was give him a budget, so that he can go and just hire a lawn mowing company to take care of things, rather than having to wait on our park staff, who would go out and do that whenever they got around to it. Let's see, finally, in productivity, and through, through administration and HR, we want to improve the feedback on the work performance, expectations, getting more feedback from new hires on the mission, vision, and values, all departments, we want to be a competitive employer in the region, and certainly in the community here. Part of that is in providing professional development opportunities, people to go on and, and work on their education, we have three in our utilities department who will be going for their Ohio EPA Operator's License Level Four, that means you can do, we can do more chemistry, more biological treatments, we can use different apparati, apparati is the proper word, apparatism, anyway, so, and, and our utilities are rocketed, the number of certifications that we have seen over the past year has been outstanding, I am just so proud of that department, I tell you. Let's see, courts also had another driver education to reduce the need for, to have driving privileges revoked, and protecting, enhancing city assets, engineering, we, we need to have a comprehensive list of the streets, utilities, parks, and the lifecycle for each one, so again, we can build in some of our sustainability planning with that, and there's a couple others, but finally, I'll, I'll stop talking, in terms of the law office, generally, increasing collaboration with other law office, law enforcement partners to provide service to, to the public, to, to our customers, so, this group has worked very hard, and Bruce, Mr. President, I know you say, we hate it when we do a plan and it just sits on the shelf, we look at this every day, I know, I look at this every day, and so I say, okay, how are we doing, what, what laws do you see before you that are going to meet the, the mission, what, what resolutions, what sort of things, we want to be able to tie those things at least back to the mission, and if we can, get a little bit more into the weeds and say, oh, this is a guiding principle here, this is, this is following our initiative in safety, quality, or productivity in this particular department, so, these guys did a great job, and I'm, I'm really thrilled, I'm really thrilled with that, we just like Council's validation of, of their hard work by adopting this, this is a second reading tonight, I believe, so, it's, I'll leave that up to you, Councilwoman, that's, that's your call.
So, I had a call from Mike Hillier, who noticed his name was still on this document, and going forward, will Mr. Miller's name be on?
Yeah, this was, yes, it will, this document was created in, on, this was as of October 31st.
Right.
So, and it's up there, but yeah, we'll absolutely, when, when we adopt it, we'll give you.
Well, his comment was, he, he didn't vote on this, so, yeah.
Well, we'll.
Whatever, I'm getting, whatever you guys decide, he worked on it, his name could stay on it, I'm fine, that kind of stuff.
He was part of the, he was part of the Phase One strategic plan, and he did help us define the mission and everything, so.
A ball.
Anyway.
I'm, I'm interested in the fire department having physical fitness, because when they carry me out, out when I have an EMT, I want to make sure they can let me, I see that, a lot of them at the Y, do we pay for their Y membership?
They get a discount.
They get a discount.
Yeah.
See a lot of them at the Y working out, and I ask them if they can, if they can let me.
Have, have you do a test run on yours?
So, I, I just have a question, are we anticipating getting a Phase Three of the strategic plan?
I think it would be, we do, we may want to get a little bit more strategic, but we need a little bit of, we need some room right now to get through the budget, I think, give some, give some time with this council, some, you all need to meet with our department heads, and let's, I think we've got time to flush that out, I would like to continue to look, to look at this and move into a Phase Three, where we're really getting into more specifics, measurable.
Yeah, because I feel like this has a lot of big concepts, but in many of these areas, we're really missing day-to-day steps, so like, how do we eat the elephant? It's one bite at a time, and I don't see many bites in here, except establishing that the fire department can carry Bruce. On page 12, I'm really interested in how we plan to reinvest locally, specifically, there was a special improvement district which was suggested for the downtown area, which I think kind of floundered because the city was not necessarily interested in buying in, so, maybe that is something that can fold into that specific piece, but I'm interested in seeing more things that we can actually check off, and maybe less words and pictures, because I don't necessarily know how this influences me making legislation.
Well, Council, I can tell you this, we would welcome your priorities, that would help us out as well, because we've, we need to hear what you're hearing from, from, from your constituents as well, so this is what we've taken from, from Phase One and turned it into this, and so, yeah, absolutely, we would love, we would love that feedback, we would love that participation, and this gives us an opportunity really to come together, and as, as the Councilwoman said, define some things and check these things off. A plan, I, I, I played football, and so you always have a game plan, but the game plan isn't always the, the plan that you end with, but you start with something, and so you have to adapt, you have to sometimes call audibles, you have to change things based on what's going on, and in this case, in the market or the tendencies or anything like that, but you start with something, and I think as we, as we get through this, once we get through this budget, once we get through launching some of these other projects, when we get some breathing room, I think it would be wise to sit down and, okay, what do we really, what do we, what's really going to move the dial for us with all of the growth, all of the development, all the prosperity and so forth that's coming our way? How are we going to responsibly invest in our community?
Okay. Yep.
Well, the next is, it's labeled 2024 Budget, actually, it's 2024 Appropriations, Budget's something we do in July, Appropriations is something we're doing now, the first committee meeting, this one committee meeting should be labeled Appropriations, because that's what we're dealing with right now, and I'll turn that over to Mrs. Woods to discuss Boyan Community Relations on the 2024 appropriations.
And, and I don't want to step on toes here, since you're here, Janice, you have to shake her head, no, we, we have had a lot of conversation about this, so, I guess I just wanted this few minutes to ask folks, because there's been some amendment ideas brought up, are, are there more questions we need to get answered before we proceed with this, where is everybody at? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I do have a question on the amendments, and I appreciate Mr. Miller's presentation and his passion for parks and rec, I, I am concerned, I have a question for maybe administration or Terry, the, the funding for the police and fire, my understanding is that they, that's for operations, and they use all of that, and then a little more from the general budget, is that correct, or am I incorrect? So, the, what I'm asking is, if we pull money from police and fire, is that going to cost, is that going to cost training, is that going to cost a cruiser, is that going to cost, you know, what? Administration and the, the folks did a lot of work last year, at the end of last year, to put all that budget together, and so, I agree with the concept of pulling from earmarked funds, but to, to pull something from the budget, now that they're planning on this year, I have a concern for, but help me out with that, then.
Yeah, maybe Terry and I can tag-team this, we had, Mr. Milliner and I had a conversation, at least I had a conversation with Chief Christopher specifically on some of these, these fire issues, with the security access, the 36,000 for that, and the new PA system for 32, they can delay on the, the access, or the security access system for 36, they can find that within their own fund, with that 208 fund.
224.
Or two, sorry, 224, and if they have, well, starting off with the PA system, they don't, that is not so pressing that they can't do next year, so they were willing to, you know, kick that for the sake of, you know, looking at, looking at these projects, they can wait on the security and video system until later in the year to see if they can reappropriate throughout that 224 fund, so that was a conversation that we had, there are some other things that, that they do, or other means that we'll be exploring for, for other revenues for the fire department, so we had that conversation with the leadership, and, and this isn't something that we're blindsiding them with, as far as the.
Impound.
As far as the impound lot, the idea here is that we are investing a lot of money in a, into a facility that the anticipation is, we're going to tear it down, so, you know, this is a priority, or a question really for Council, is can we make do for the remaining several years with what we have, because it seems like a lot of money to invest, you know, you're looking at $42,000 to then come in and rip down, that is not to say that we can't make some of these improvements, we may have that in that 208 budget, so this will just be a conversation for the administration and for the chief and the captain to have with the administration, and maybe we, along the way, if revenues are up and expenditures are down, we'll work with Mr. Scott, and we'll come back to, you know, supplemental appropriations along the way, and, and we do that every meeting, so, if I may, as we talk about these, these budget conversations, I always joke with. So if I may, as we talk about these budget conversations, I always joke with our department heads, you know, when it comes to taxpayer dollars, particularly in the, in the general revenue fund, it's the same pair of pants, it's just different pockets, right? But we have a lot of projects that we're cooking with right now, and we really just need to put on the pants, right? We need to pass these appropriations so we can get to work that the people expect us to. You can quote me on that, Cheryl. But, so, yeah, this is something that, you know, we can have these, these extended conversations throughout the year. Money can change line items, particularly in the general revenue, not so much with those designated revenues. But to Mr. Miller's point, as long as we're appropriately using the money in those designated funds or the enterprise funds, if we can free up some of the money in other funds, particularly funded by the general revenue fund, that's a better, or a more appropriate use of taxpayer dollars. So the more freedom of that money, the better, I think.
I didn't want to go all the way down the rabbit hole, so I appreciate it. As long as the, police and fire have been, have been, they're not being blindsided by this, and they're not pulling money away from critical areas, then, okay, but.
And Terry, nothing you heard from Mr. Miller seems, thank you.
The mechanism of how we get these changes made will be a little bit more done different.
Yeah, there are two different ways we could do it. As Mr. Scott is talking about, we could amend the legislation now, or we could come back next week with a transfer.
Transfer.
Which would be a simpler and cleaner way of doing it, is just once we establish the funds, and then transfer it next week by a specific piece of legislation, transferring the money.
I agree with that, because this is the first time we've seen this. And I don't know that I want to hold up the appropriations tonight. I think we need to move around, move forward with the appropriations so we can get the city business moving. And then if, now a council can study this between now and the next meeting, and we can do, do a transfer at the next meeting, that way we can move forward with city funding.
The bigger, the bigger picture.
Right.
That we can move with. So, yes, you're correct.
Yeah, just to make clear, I would in no way ever, in my lifetime, hurt police and fire. Over 30 years in that type of a line of work. All I did was look at the funding in each of those budgets, and I looked at the report that Terry gave me, as far as what the anticipated revenues and unencumbered funds were, and looked at the end of the year tally, to come up with, can they afford that type of a request? I just want to make sure it's clear, because I know press is here.
Yeah.
I would never do that type of thing.
I think you jumped off the page, Mike, to me was, was the impound lot, because I'm on that committee that's discussing what we're going to do with the Fire, with the Police Department, and we're talking about moving the impound lot. Why are we spending a lot of money in the impound lot if we're going to tear it down?
But can it stand for four years? I mean, you need to use it for four years.
Sure. And we can, we can look at those priorities. You know, number one, the first thing that comes to mind is, is the garage door, and then we look at the roof overhang, and so painting, it can be ugly.
All right, so we literally have three minutes. Any other?
I have one question for clarification, just to make sure we're not wearing the same pants someone else is wearing. The demo of eight and six East Chestnut Street is listed at 180,000. And I had asked a couple of times about demo funds from the land bank, and was told, no, we don't have any of those. But when I talked to ADF, they said, yes, we'll be taking that down, and we'll be paying 75%. So why are we budgeting for the full amount, which is 8,000 more than they have assigned, when we're only going to be spending so much money?
Right. So part of this is just where we are in time, right? So when we wrote the first budget package, they had not gotten approved for their EPA money, and they still haven't, all the details aren't worked out on the grant. So that's something that we don't, you know, in the meantime, the price may have gone up slightly, too. So there's a little bit of fluff there. If one of our other projects is slightly more expensive, we'll, we'll be, Terry and I will be transparent to say, hey, we're moving this to cover something somewhere else.
So will you have to come back to counsel, though, whenever you move that money?
So anything over $75,000 will require us to talk to you about procuring that work.
So no.
So this is a, this is a, well, so the idea is, we will come back to you and say, we are asking to enter a contract to demo the building, and here's where the money's coming from.
Well, Brian, let me step in. So for, let me get that out. For procurement, over 75,000, we would have to come back to counsel, but for line transfers over the, over the figure of, we just changed it. What, how much is that?
Three.
3,000. So you will see significant line transfers come back to counsel, but for procurement, for bids or whatnot, that's over 75,000. That's set forth by the ORC.
So what line is this assigned to? Terry, do you know?
If you go, there's a list of things, and there's a, there's a line, there.
Oh, at the top?
Yeah, so that, all of those type of projects are in that, tied together. So as we bring these back to you, one at a time to go out to bid, we will give you an update basically almost at every meeting of where we are in the execution of the budget. Make sense? Agree?
Anything else? Okay, we're going to adjourn that committee, and we're going to turn it back to employing community relations with Mrs. Woods to discuss court wages.
Oh, my, busy tonight. Mr. Boring, I'm going to count on you for this. So can you kind of walk through, because we have four pieces of legislation tonight? I know there's been lots of discussions, or at least I've had lots of discussions, of what, what we want to do here, what we're required to do, and what our leeway is.
So, under the revised code, if the municipal court brings in through its costs more money than it spends, it is allowed to set all of the salaries within their department, within this court. If they do not, and they have to come to the city for funding, council has the discretion to set the salaries for the people, for the positions that are before you. There are certain positions that are not before you. The bailiff is one of them that the court has the absolute discretion to set. The deputy clerks, who work for the clerk, she has the absolute right to set those salaries. But other than that, pretty much all the other positions, council, because the revenues do not, or do not meet their expenses, council has the absolute right to set those.
Because I think there's been some confusion in the past when these came to us, it was basically, you have to pass these. I know there's been some talk about how this is going to affect your office, if these kind of increases are given at the court level. Do you want to?
There certainly, if the court increases salaries before the, Mrs. Neff sent me an email today that a number of these positions are in the current salary survey they're doing. And so she wondered about how those, meet up with those, but we don't have that information yet. So, but if you get, if you give large increases to a number of people right now, I've got staff members who have graduate degrees and professional licenses, who are going to wonder why they're not in line for this sort of immediate raise. And it will cause significant trouble for me.
So counsel, tonight, this is up for, these four pieces are up for a second reading. Thoughts?
I guess part of the funding for the court is also from the county, correct? So the salaries would be split between, how's that go?
The court splits, the county pays two fifths of the judge, the bailiff, and the clerk. They also pay jury costs for a jury trial that occurs outside of, for anything outside the city. I think that's about it.
Health insurance for those.
Oh, the health insurance, yeah, they also pay two fifths of the health insurance and PERS for those people.
So the, these compensation studies would cover positions like this, but it's not back yet. But we're at the second reading. Do we feel like the compensation study is going to come back within the next two weeks? No. So essentially, we'd be improving them.
We do, we do have the prior compensation study. We do have the prior compensation study. I'm not sure if these positions were included in that last Clemens Nelson study.
And when was that done?
Twenty-one, twenty-two, yeah, somewhere in there. Now, again, those numbers do not reflect significant growth since then or inflation, but we do have that to look at. And again, I do not know if those positions were included in that compensation study.
Has counsel ever voted these down, historic, ever?
Do we have what the salary was last year for each of these four positions?
That was going to be my next question.
Mr. Scott has that.
I thought I might be able to find it, but can't.
Nope.
Okay, it sounds, it sounds like we need more information. We'll give this a second reading, and.
Do you want to hear from the judge, and?
I'm going to leave that at your discretion. If that's something you, and I completely understand that, I'm just saying, if you think he needs to come here and talk about it.
Well, he's sitting here.
Oh, sorry. What did you do here?
Roger's right here.
I apologize. I had no idea you were here.
Well, I'm, I'm here because I was asked to send my employees, but I don't really know what we're doing, so I didn't want to send them into a meeting that I wasn't sure what it was about.
So it sounds like there's.
What positions are you concerned about? Because just historically, this is my 10th budget season, and for 10 years, I have only asked for the minimal two or 3% increases, and I have lost employees to other departments because they can make more money within the city. But I also have lots of employees with graduate degrees and social worker licensures. And I think you have to be careful when you're thinking about the municipal court, because it's not, as I say repeatedly, a subdivision of the city. It has county-wide jurisdiction, but it's also part of a statewide system of state courts. And we have to perform to standards that are accepted statewide for municipal courts. And I understand that may cause problems for certain departments, but we have to retain people, too. I have lost administrators in the probation department who could make more money to the tax department, and so on. Are there, is there a particular position that's a concern tonight?
No, I think we're walking this tightrope of the cities having the same issues of view, or losing people, and there was a salaries, I was told there was a salary study being done.
There was one done a few years ago.
Yeah, but we're doing one currently now, right?
One is in process.
My opinion was that Clemens and Nelson did not get a good response from the courts that were asked for compensation information. I hope that they do a better job this time of getting more, but, you know, we aren't doing this in a vacuum. My clerk, who's here tonight, belongs to the State Clerks Association. My chief probation officer is here tonight, he belongs to the Chief, the Probation Officers' Association. We talked to other courts. We know what they're getting paid. We're at, we're at the bottom.
So can you answer the question? We don't have access to what the salaries currently are. Are we looking at two to 3%? Is that what these are?
Not for all of them.
Okay.
And just historically, I'd like to point out that I had a deputy clerk, full-time, retire, and a part-time deputy clerk leave for a different position. Those positions were never filled. So we have found ways to fill the gaps without hiring new people. I'd like to point out that personally, I don't have a secretary myself, the other judges in the county do. I also don't have a magistrate. The magistrates are paid a significant salary full-time, plus benefits. I don't have that. So I think we're doing a pretty good job, and I like to retain the people I have. I've got four probation officers who together have 80 years of experience in probation. Not in just employment, but probation. I've got a chief clerk, or clerk of court, who's been accepted into the highest Supreme Court's Court Administrators Program, which is a competitive process. So I don't think what we're asking for is unreasonable. I think we've been very frugal over the past nine budget seasons, and I don't think it's correct or fair to compare the court's salaries and requests with other departments that are, have nothing to do with the court's operation. That's a separate problem. You might as well compare the court's compensation to the Fire Department or the Police Department.
Does anybody else have questions?
It'd be interesting to see previous salaries, or if it was included, anything that was included in the previous Clemens. We don't know that it was or not.
I can, I can provide that for you.
Any information we can have before we get to the third reading?
And one last point would be, we're currently replacing a probation officer who resigned with one who's brand-new with no experience, so she's going to be paid significantly less than the person that she's replacing. We just replaced a deputy clerk, and we're going to be replacing one through retirement this year, who's at the top level of compensation, because she's been here for 20, 22 years. So we're going to replace, obviously, that person with a lot less than what she's currently making. So things are changing as well, but, you know, if you'd like more than a five-minute discussion on, you know, what we're paying our people and how it compares with other courts, we're happy to come back with information. We just weren't given any kind of idea of what this was going to be about tonight.
I have a question. So, yes, you have union staff at the municipal court?
No.
You don't, at all? It's a little process. Don't ask me or anything? Okay.
Or all at will employees.
All at will? Okay. And they, you say over the last 10 budget cycles, they vary 2% back researches?
I don't recall. Terry can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have not asked for more than whatever Terry said to ask for. If he said 3%, that's what we asked for.
Okay. But they're all at will? Okay.
Yep.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we do another 15-minute committee meeting at the next meeting? And Terry, if you can get us what these increases are to folks to look at?
We have an idea.
Okay. And we'll get this done for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We need to know how much money comes in from courts versus what we're spending in the courts.
Is that, thank you, Terry. I wasn't going to commit you if it was going to be a lot of work.
We'll do it in the House.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
We are adjourned. The committee meetings are adjourned. We're in recess now until 7:30 PM. We'll begin the legislative portion of the meeting.
7:30 PM. We'll begin the legislative portion of the meeting.
It's now 7:30 PM. I'm gonna call the legislative portion of the February 12th meeting of Mount Vernon City Council to order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seville?
Here.
Mr. Severance?
Here.
Mr. Mahan?
Here.
Mrs. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Ruckman?
Here.
Ms. Keener?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. We are in session. The invocation this evening will be given by our chaplain from the police department, Jerry Scott. Please rise to the invocation. And then after the invocation, we'll have the scouts come up and lead us in the pledge.
Well, precious Lord, we come before you tonight giving thanks for the beautiful weather that we have had, the lack of snow. You can do more of that. But, Lord, we just simply ask that as we are placed in the middle of Ohio, Knox County, in the city of Mount Vernon, that you will continue to reach down and bless this community in such a way that all will know that you're completely in charge. Lord, I just simply ask, as we go through this next year, that you will bring this council together to work cohesively and together for the benefit of all, but most of all, for your benefit. Now, Father, we just simply ask that the newest members, Mr. Miller and Mr. Ruckman, as they start, and they've already been starting as through their career as city council members, that the older, no, make that the seasoned, members of council will wrap their arms around them in guidance and direction so that we may best benefit you with whatever we do as we grow and expand within this city. And, Lord, we ask a special blessing now for our first responders, that you will keep them safe. Other areas have had some tragic situations, but they are the face of Mount Vernon. They see our firemen and our police officers more than anyone else. So, Lord, just wrap your arms around them, keep them safe, and we will just simply give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I'd like to have the members of Troop 339 that are here to work on their citizenship to the community badge come up here and lead us in the pledge. We welcome you.
We, shorty, in the hudge of allegiance.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't you come up here and tell us your names?
I'm Derek Purdy.
I'm Ash Lomond.
I'm Jessica Giffen.
I'm Sophia Maddick.
Well, we welcome you. As I said before, my first city council meeting when I was your age, I was working on my Eagle Scout badge, and that's obviously citizenship in the community is part of that. I apologize. I had a councilman before, Mr. Francis, who bought these. And I've asked our auditor to buy some more. But I have two of these to give to you. You could share these, and we'll be getting more. And this is the Constitution of the United States, and it's an interesting reading. So, you can come up and get these and share these among you. We appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. Counsel, in your packet are the minutes from the legislative session from January 22nd. Are there any additions or corrections? I'd ask for motion for approval.
So, move.
Second.
Then move to second. And moving to second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. Mr. Hill, any petitions or communications?
There are none.
Counsel, the committee reports are in your packets. I see no liquor control licenses. We do have one proclamation to be read this evening, and that's on Ariel Foundation, and Mrs. Keener will be reading that.
There's actually three. Oh, we're, okay. Well, so sorry, I missed that part.
Do you want to have her come up?
Sure. I was going to have her come up at the end, but you can come up now if you want. Proclamation, "In appreciation of the Ariel Foundation for its continued partnership with Mount Vernon to improve the city's quality of life, whereas the Ariel Foundation has since 2009 partnered with the city of Mount Vernon to promote community preservation and revitalization, and whereas, the foundation has made significant financial commitments to improve this city from the creation of Ariel Foundation Park to more recently providing assistance for a roof replacement at the C.A.N.C. rail depot, and whereas, efforts to beautify the community have been a priority for the foundation, exemplified by the donation of a nine-foot-tall bronze reproduction of the Statue of Liberty for the C.A.N.C. depot, to continuing efforts to assist the city's Shade Tree and Beautification Commission with its mission, and whereas, the foundation has also proven time and time again its interest in keeping Mount Vernon a livable and inviting city, including its efforts to help keep the sidewalks clean of snow and multiple initiatives within the city and other local organizations to revitalize the downtown. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Mount Vernon Mayor Matt Starr and the Mount Vernon City Council do hereby recognize the Ariel Foundation for everything that it has done and continues to do for this city." And Jen, if you would like to say just a couple of words.
Very quickly, you have a big night tonight. Thank you for being such great partners on behalf of Karen Wright, our foundation, our board members, and the community. It's our pleasure to partner in making Mount Vernon an even better place to live and to work and to play. Thank you for all the thoughtfulness, intentionality you place in the responsibilities that you hold for our city and for our community. It is appreciated, and we appreciate being your partner. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll get you a copy of this that's really pretty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. We do appreciate everything, Ariel Foundation. It's time for the city. Now we have a person speaking of matters of city concern. We have Sarah Lohman from Troop 339. Please come to the podium.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am actually just maybe more notifying you that our troop is organizing a park and river cleanup of the area north of Riverside Park, along the river where there has been illegal dumping and abandoned camps along the riverbed. So, I just wanted to, I guess, more notify you and just let you know that we are working with the Mount Vernon Parks Department to get appropriate gates opened up to us. We've been working with local businesses are either donating tarps and gloves. MVNU is organizing a bunch of workers to come work with us, other scout troops and 4-H clubs, and Republic Waste Services is actually donating a dumpster to have us haul things away. So, I just, I know that there's a big coccocing cleanup in September, and we're just doing one now to help address some of the refuse that has been left behind. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We want to keep our parks and city beautiful, and the parks are a real attraction for the city, and we appreciate what you're doing. Thanks to all the troop members also. Counsel, in your packets are the agenda, are the agenda items for the legislative portion tonight? Are there any additions or corrections? And I'll assume it's approved by consensus, and we have one resolution for third reading. That's Resolution Number 2024-05. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2024-05, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, Dan Emmett Water and Sewer Improvements, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ruckman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-05.
Second.
I move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Ruckman.
I have nothing to it. Does anybody have any questions? We got to hear from our engineer, Mr. Ball, earlier, and he went into some detail regarding what this is going to be trying to tackle. I think it's a good idea and would urge for its passage. Thank you, counsel.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Now I move to resolutions for second reading. We have two of those. The first one is Resolution Number 2024-08. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2024-08, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for Mansfield Avenue Water Line and Drainage Improvements and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2024-08 to its third and final reading.
Seconded. I move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes. So, the scouts and the audience know what we're doing. By our city council rules, it takes three readings in order to pass a resolution ordinance, but you can suspend those rules in case that we need to move forward with that. A lot of times, we need to pay bills or it's just something where we're approving a person to be on a commission. No sense in taking it to three readings. So, what we did just now is we suspended that rule to have three separate readings, and we're taking it to the third and final reading. So, the rule has been suspended. Mr. Severance.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 2024-08.
Seconded. I move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Severance.
I think we heard from our engineer on this. I think we know we need to move this forward. We're good.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2024-11. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2024-11, a resolution adopting Phase Two of the City of Mount Vernon Strategic Plan as a statement of the city's values and guide for future legislative and administrative priorities.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. We'll give this its second reading, and if I could get a 15-minute committee meeting, I've already had a couple of questions that I'll get with you, Mr. Mayor. If anybody else has questions, get those to me, and I'll make sure they get answered for next time.
So, this resolution receives its second reading. So, scouts, you can see this was not taken to a third reading. It receives its second reading, so at our next meeting, it will be time for the third reading of this resolution. Next resolution is for first reading. That's Resolution 2024-15. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2024-15, a resolution appointing John Ruckman to the Board of Directors of Experienced Mount Vernon of Mount Vernon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2024-15 to its third and final reading.
Second.
Any discussion on the suspension of the rules? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-15.
Second.
I move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
Well, before he changes his mind, does anybody have questions so we can vote on this?
Do we know this guy?
John, the sweatshirt that they just bought me probably won't fit you, so.
This is Mr. Ruckman, by the way.
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2024-16. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2024-16, a resolution confirming council's reappointment of Samantha Ramsier to the local Board of Tax Review and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2024-16 to its third and final reading.
Second.
I move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods.
Move to adopt Resolution 2024-16.
Second.
I move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
I'm making comments on this one. I just didn't want him changing his mind.
Samantha Ramsier is an accountant, a local accountant. She is at an accounting firm here in town, Mr. Tax. She's getting very involved in the community and is on another one of our boards, Board of, Local Board of Tax Review meets very infrequently. I think the last one that we had was in 2018, perhaps. So, it meets as needed, and it's again, if people need to appeal their tax, their taxes, and so we work very closely with, what's that?
Enlodging Excise Tax.
Enlodging Excise Tax. Yes, thank you for that, Mrs. Scott. And so, anyway, she's ready to continue to be on call here for us.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
The resolution is adopted. The next resolution is Resolution Number 2024-17. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2024-17, a resolution reappointing Amber Keener to the Board of Trustees of the Knox County Convention and Visitors Bureau and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2024-17 to its third and final reading.
Second.
I move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods.
Move to adopt Resolution 2024-17.
Second.
I move to second for the adoption of this resolution.
Wasn't sure I wanted it.
Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
Make it quick so she doesn't change her mind.
I think she'd be a good fit for this group, so, anyway.
Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2024-18. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2024-18, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution Number 2024-18 to its third and final reading.
Oh, second. Wow, it's contagious. I apologize.
I move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-18.
Second.
I move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mrs. Seville, and counsel. It's just starting up a whole new year, and we're already receiving unanticipated funds for this 2024 year. By way of the grant from the Ariel Foundation, thank you, for snow removal services, this is a program that we have had for a number of years in regards to Ariel Foundation and the school area out into the Division Street as well, up in that general area of Memorial Park area, is what this is all about, and we appreciate again for Ariel Corporation on their support for this particular initiative that we've had for a number of years. Thank you, Mrs. Seville.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2024-19. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2024-19, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to pay bills from 2023 and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I'd like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution Number 2024-19 to its third and final reading.
Second.
I move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-19.
Second.
I move to second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville.
I guess we're going to pay some bills from 2023.
Let's be correct, Mrs. Seville and counsel, we do have five items here. We classify these as old bills because they're using the current appropriations to cover those expenditures that should have incurred purchase orders in 2023. All of these are pending for payment at this time. Mrs. Seville, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2024-20. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2024-20, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon to enter into agreements to acquire additional right-of-way located within the city of Mount Vernon to complete the Mansfield Avenue Project, KNO-CR5-0.47, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2024-20 to its third and final reading.
Seconded. I move to second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Severance.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 2024-20.
Seconded. I move to second for the adoption of this resolution and discussion. Mr. Severance.
We heard from the engineer earlier about acquiring this property along Mansfield, and I think it's another piece of the project there we need to move forward.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. The final resolution for this evening is Resolution Number 2024-21. Mr. Hill.
Resolution Number 2024-21, a resolution to make appropriations for current expenses and set resolution supplements, interim appropriations and other expenditures for the city of Mount Vernon, state of Ohio during fiscal year ending December 31, 2024.
Mrs. Seville. Mrs. Siebel.
Do you want me to take it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2024-21 to its third and final reading.
Second.
Then move it second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mrs. Siebel.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
I move to amend Resolution 2024-21 as follows. You can pass these out in the general direction. The Recreation Director, line 101, 2620, 54111, take that to a salary of $2,000 for the year. That is in an effort to explore this position's potential and to bring focus to the physical nature of our public parks. To strike the HR generalist from the positions which were recommended by administration, to reduce the demolition costs to $35,000 due to demolition funding possibly being utilized for this out of projects from the land bank demolition funds, to utilize the fire fund for $36,000 and the PD fund for $30,000 for repairs not to be deducted from the public buildings and lands and to remove $90,000 from the park's capital improvement appropriations for the dog park and place that into parks.
Go ahead, say it.
Second, I have a question for you. You meant to say 20,000, right?
Yes, 20,000. Oh, sorry. No, 20,000 for the Rec. Director.
Say it second for discussion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for an amendment to this resolution. Any discussion?
I think that there were enough questions about the HR generalist that we would really like to explore more of what that position will entail. And I think that the Rec. Director, there was a clear focus on needing to bring our parks somewhat up to a standard. I think that it's difficult to argue that we can sell naming rights to buildings that are falling down. There's a lot of horse before the cart, I think, with some of these. It is, we've heard repeatedly tonight, very easy to switch money back and forth. And so if it's so easy to switch money back and forth, why should we put all of these out there immediately when there are still questions on quite a few of them?
Any discussion?
I have a question. The HR generalist position we discussed last Saturday was going to take over some of the civil service testing. Is that correct?
Yes. We will still need to hire a position to do the civil service testing, but I think that there were enough questions about how much that position should make, what that position should do, the job description for that, that I thought it was appropriate.
Again, question, are we, are these individual amendments that we're voting on individually? Or are you suggesting that we amend all in one?
Right now, they're all there. You can amend the amendment if you want to take one out or add something else.
Or we can just vote the amendment down.
That is the other option.
So the Rec. Director becomes a part-time person?
It is, it is still a part-time person. It's just a part-time person with a bit of a pay bump in order to hopefully have an individual there who can balance time. I know that it is difficult with a full-time job, so to emphasize that a little bit.
Council, what's your wishes? Any other discussion?
I, am I allowed to call for some input from the administration?
You can ask them.
Okay. Tanner, I'd like to hear.
Yep. So first things first with the HR generalist. The city created the HR department within the last two years. I'll be frank, we have combined civil service with HR for an emphasis on being that innovative community authentically hometown. We're trying to provide modern city services to be a competitive employer. This is not the way that we do that. We are overburdening our HR. We do not have a modern HRIS system. We do not have the resources to make that department efficient. And by combining those two departments, reducing an employee and then potentially saying all of the work that two individuals were doing, now one should do with no help, you run the risk of running off the HR director who is already underpaid.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
Because I, I didn't hear her say that. I thought I heard you say we'd have to have somebody do the civil service.
Yeah, so I did say that this is a position that I'd like to see brought back.
And at no point did, in these amendments, did that dollar figure get added back into civil service. So I say if you cut that position, you run the risk of eliminating our current HR director and that would be two HR directors in the City of Mount Vernon within two years. And I ask what sort of message that sends to our employees and to the community at large. Moving on to the Rec. Director, if you would allow me.
Yes.
Not all of the members of this council, but recently, this council passed or accepted a resolution or a policy allowing for naming rights, given the situation in our current parks. The Rec. Director is the only position that you're considering right now that has the ability to increase the revenues of this city. Before you cut it, I would strongly encourage you to consider the opportunity that lays before you. It is the administration's job to make sure that this position is evaluated based on its performance. If in two years, this position is not bringing in that revenue, then we can examine it. But no other position that is being proposed to you at this point is sole purpose is to bring in revenues to increase everybody has maintained tonight. It is incredibly important that we invest in our parks and quality of life. This person's job is to make sure that those efforts are spearheaded and funded. If you cut it back to part-time, you are continuing to kick the can down the road and say good is good enough and we have even said that things ain't good.
Other questions, council?
I had two things. One is I think I voiced, I am a little uncomfortable moving forward the entire budget tonight, but I understand, I asked that we need to do something just because of the timeliness of getting it and comparing it to past notes that we have taken or I have taken. So with the Recreation Director line, is this a position that we can, as council, because I know many on council struggle with adding so many positions we've already talked about? Is there something that we could put into this position that it is reevaluated in three years? Maybe that then, like a grant?
So I would encourage council to go ahead and pass this budget tonight. And there will have to be conversations on compensation and job creation in the future. And we can have those conversations at that point. And I would encourage you all to have conversations with Tom Hinkle and Denise Neff at that point. And then we can evaluate those positions based on their position at that time, which I think is most appropriate. Not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Let's, if you will, put those pants on so we can do the business of the city and not quarrel over one line item.
Well, and, and, I'm sorry, I, it's not funny, ha ha, but it's funny we've gotten to the two positions that on the Saturday when we were down there, I said, are we to the point where we need more information for these two positions? Because we kind of flew through, it went smooth until we hit these two. You know, maybe, maybe these two are something that, just for peace of mind of what we're moving forward with, we just need more information on. Maybe that's what's brought this up.
And so to follow up on that, so if they were passed in the budget tonight, the executive branch still has to come back to say, these are the PDs, this is the salary we're requesting. And then council then can have, can still have further discussion on that.
Is that true with the Rec. Director, though? That position exists?
Yes. We would still need to set that salary and expand it to a full-time position. So we would have that conversation separately at that point. You can appropriate the money now and then we could have that conversation down the road.
But we can still appropriate the money later on if we don't utilize it here. So we're not really losing anything if you guys are going to have to come back to council for creating a full-time position, creating a salary. We can move the money at the same time. So that's kind of a straw man argument saying that if we don't, you know, set aside the money now, we can't do this in the whole year.
You are re-appropriating money that we have already set aside for this. We, we had already had a plan and at no point was this conversation brought up prior to, five seconds before this budget.
I think Saturday, it was pretty heavily discussed.
As we left, there's a reason that these line items are in this current appropriations proposal and that was because when we left Saturday, that was the anticipation.
I, I do think on Saturday, like I said, when we hit this part, there was a definite lull in the conversation. I'm not sure if folks are saying no, it's just I hear we need more information about these two.
I left Saturday thinking that we had come to a general agreement and, I mean, this is written, my vote is no on this amendment. I felt like that we had an agreement. Again, we're going to come back and talk about the salaries, going to talk about the job descriptions. But I'm not, I'm not in support of this amendment. I thought we had reached a general agreement in a public meeting last Saturday.
I concur with Mr. Mahan. I thought this was already generally agreed that we were going to move forward with these. So I would, I would vote no on this amendment for sure.
Other discussion?
So do, do we need to take out this, make it, I guess I would make in a, an amendment, unless, unless somebody, I don't know the process here.
Do we have to vote on this amendment?
We have to vote on this?
No, you can amend the amendment.
If you want amendment to the amendment, you can make an amendment to this, her amendment.
Okay. I, I, I think from, from conversations that we've had already about the bottom two, utilize the fire fund, the PD fund, the 208224 fund, I think we've already covered that one. Am I correct on that? Discussion right, Terry? Is that what we were talking about a little bit ago?
Yeah.
Same thing. The, the dog park, I think we've covered that one also. So I guess, and then the, I think, I, I would make an amendment that the bottom two lines of this amendment, we could remove from this discussion right now.
So if you remove the $90,000 for the dog park, that stays assigned to the dog park?
I think you remove the top three from this amendment and then you.
Because I had said, I had put those four, those amendments forward in the park.
You, you have to put the amendments forward here. Doing it in a committee meeting is.
I got you.
Yeah, this is the legislative portion of what you're doing, yeah. It's okay.
That's all right. I've got ignorance, so I'm not afraid to say it.
Has someone proposed an amendment to this amendment or are we ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
I think we're ready to vote for it.
So there, there was no amendment, there was no second, there was no amendment to the amendment. We're on the original amendment.
Yeah, so we're, we're voting on this.
We're back to the original amendment as, as written.
I have an amendment.
Okay.
Because in, in her budget amendment, she's only talking about utilizing $36,000 and $30,000 from what I had discussed in our Parks Committee meeting. So the amendment that I would make is that I would use my amendment from, I need to submit it now if I can do that. Did this open up the budget discussion?
So your line four is what you discussed in committee. Is that what we're discussing here?
So you want to strike number four and put forward your.
Yes. I would strike number four and put forward my amendment that I had discussion on in the Parks Committee meeting. And I would also then move forward to put my amendment forward and remove the bottom number five line in yours. Sorry, it got confusing.
The dog park?
Yeah, the dog park. Do you want me to read those again? I think everybody's got copy of them.
So just removing the dog park and then you're changing the funding in line four here.
No, he's just replacing both of those lines with his two amendments.
That leaves one, two, and three.
And four and five that he's amending, but there would have to be a second on his amendment to the amendment.
I'll second that for the purpose of discussion.
I'm thoroughly confused at this point.
Okay, so there's an amendment and a second, there's an amendment to the amendment and a second to the amendment to the amendment. Now we're open for discussion only on the amendment to the amendment, not on the amendment and not on the resolutions, but only amendment to the amendment.
What is that amendment again?
So can I clarify? If you take Amber's sheet.
Yes.
All right.
And the fourth one is utilize the fire.
You know, Mr. Hill here has to go and transcribe all of this and no one has shared any of these pieces of paper with us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought one made it.
Would it be possible for Mr. Hill to get this so that we can?
Let me make some copy. I'll make copies. I'll be there.
Oh, there are.
I mean, because right now you're, you're sort of.
Is this one of each?
That's just mine.
Okay, that's just.
Do you need these three from me?
We need yours and.
Okay, Keith, we got a bunch of these.
Those are the three I talked about.
These are my.
These are not the same.
Okay, what do we got there?
Is yours three pages?
I got three pages. I get three every once.
Okay, can we, okay.
All right.
What's number?
So you do realize that number five on mine is the same.
This is the, yes, okay.
Yep, it does matter.
You referenced.
Okay, so this one is the police and fire. This is number one, this is dog park. This is one. That is that. This would be two. And this would be three.
Don't fall asleep, scouts.
I was going to say, they may want to head home.
There you go. One, three, three. There you go.
All right. Oh, that's, okay, that's right, that's two. That's two. Okay, that's the one that Amber started with. All right, so, so just, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here with Mr. Hill. We have the budget amendments. We have, one is the Rec. Director, number two is the HR Generalist, number three is DEMO, number four is utilize the fire fund, and number five is $90,000 from the Parks Capital. That's the original First Amendment, okay? Then Mike made, and as soon as Brian comes back, we will then make sure that we understand this so that we can keep some sort of record of what we're doing.
He's making copies of them.
Okay.
So Tammy, what was your question?
We're able to discuss.
Well, I think because.
Let's wait until we get Brian back so that everybody's talking on the same pages.
He's coming.
Here's the first half of it. There's more coming.
I'm good. You guys all have it already?
I gave mine to.
Once he gives me mine back, I'm good. I've got everything.
Okay.
I don't have, I don't have his.
I don't have Mike's. I gave it to Sharon.
Bring it back.
Sorry. Apparently I needed those.
There's one. This is a, one of Mike's three.
We need.
I've got my original three.
I gave him mine. All right, does anybody, any other member of council need this? Either of the stacks? All right. Right, I gave her mine again.
Okay, so.
So. So we have Amber's amendment, which we have the first. Then Mike's amendment is specifically to take these three pages that you gave us and how are we amending, how are we changing Amber's?
I would make amendment that number one, that deals with what we, what I discussed during my Parks Committee meeting about the dog park funding, would go in place of her fifth line down.
Yeah.
I would make number one of mine go there. And I would make number two of mine, which is exactly what I discussed in the Parks Committee meeting. I would make that go down to line four.
Okay.
He's directing it towards park or equipment.
And then I don't, the, the line three deals with that one position. If this is the appropriate place to put that in the amendment, I would put this in there as an amendment. So if not, that's fine.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
This number three about that, that one small $3,300.
So technically, we're not even working.
We're not even working on this one yet.
Considering this one.
We're on this one.
Number three.
Okay, I'm good with hold number three. I'm good with one and two.
All right, one and two.
The $3,300, that's really, oh, that's out of the picture right now. So just to clarify, number five on Amber's amendment would be replaced by number one, one yours.
Yes.
Which is the $90,000 and 150.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, number five, yes. Yeah, gotcha.
And number four would be replaced by this other second one.
Okay.
Mr. Miller, are you friendly in your amendment to the amendment to striking line one and two from Amber's amendment, which would. one and two from Amber's amendment, which would have to do with the recreation director and the HR generalist?
You would have to, we have, his amendment is on the floor.
No, we're, we're, we're just.
Yeah.
All we're worrying about right now is Mike's one and two replacing the four and five.
We can get to those at a later time, another, but right now, we're just discussing this specific thing that he's laid out.
So Mike, are you amenable to those, you, you are okay with those changes?
My two amendments added to her two, or doing away with her two and add my two.
Correct. And Amber, are you?
He's saying do away with number four and five.
Yes.
And put in two and one.
One and.
One and two, yes, yeah, two and one, that you go down.
So then I second.
Well, we had a second, now we're discussing. So do you support it, Amber?
Do we have a second on the amendment to the amendment? Oh, okay.
He said in order to get into discussion, Jay made a second to the amendment.
For discussion.
So that locked in what we were doing.
Okay, thank you for that.
I'm lost.
All right, discussion on the amendment to the amendment.
What is the primary purpose of doing that? What is your stated objective? Of the second amendment here? Of the amendment to the amendment. The amendment to the amendment, I guess, is to get these two in our budget appropriations, to make sure they're good there. Her, I, I think her number four was not as.
Thorough.
Thorough as what mine was.
So we would really be voting in favor of your two?
Yes, you would be voting in favor of my two, on my amendment.
To replace hers?
Replace hers, yes, is that right, Bruce?
Yes.
I have a discussion. Mr. Hill, Mrs. Seville.
I'm still totally confused.
So this pieces that he's putting in are more detailed than what I had here.
You're leaving these three in?
This is the first amendment, so we're just voting on replacing these two with his amendments that are more detailed.
We're just talking about these two with these two?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Uh, yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
The amendment is amended, now we're back to the original amendment as amended.
At the risk of becoming ridiculous, in order for me to be able to support this, I'm going to have to request that we amend what I'm going to call the Mike version of this amendment, by striking line one and two, because I feel like that those were, those positions were negotiated last Saturday, and this represents a change from that council discussion.
Are we just discussing?
No, what, no, what, what we have is, he's made the motion to strike the first two items in Amber's original motion, so right now, we have a motion on the floor, we need a second to continue discussion.
And that would be to just, to strike?
Strike one and two.
Yes.
I'll second to get it on.
For discussion.
Floor, yes.
Okay, now we have an amendment, an amendment to the amended, amended.
Amendment.
Version two.
And, and, open for discussion, now we're talking about striking one and two in the original amendment.
I, I mean, I can support this, um, because I think we do need these positions, so if that's all we're doing is that we, by, by striking these two from Amber's amendment original, we would be moving forward with these positions, I believe we need to do that.
So I will say, I don't disagree that we need these positions, and that we even need a full-time rec director, I just need more information about them before moving forward, which I think I met with Terry for more than an hour last week, and this came up in the discussion, and it brought more questions, I think, than it did answers, which is why I felt led to bring this amendment to the floor.
There's two train of thoughts here, if we take it out, we can always bring it back later, if we leave it in, it still needs to come back to city council, because it's a new position in order to discuss it, so either way, it has to come back to council.
And I'm going to ask again, that's true for the rec director, even though it already exists?
Yes.
Yeah, the rec director.
Because we're moving it to full time.
It's an expanded position, they could not go and pay them more, or expand their duties without that first coming to council to agree to that.
And just to note, if you haven't caught all of your email, and I know we've had a lot lately, but we do have these position descriptions sent to us, I believe, by Mr. Sayers just recently, so we need to look at those, but, I mean, I'm, I, I do support taking these off of this amendment, because I believe we need the positions.
I, I have a question, Terry, when I got home today, I tried to catch up and compare what we had been given two weeks, three weeks ago, the first meeting we had discussion with the budget line item, budget appropriations, are, and I compared some of the different numbers, as far as if these positions got put in there to be funded, so are these two positions as a full-time rec director and as an HR generalist, did those get put into this budget that we received an email today, or the, is the money in the line item in there for those two positions today?
Generalist, yes, rec director, no.
Okay, so that, that would be a question that I have then, is we discussed that at our last meeting about if that's in there or not for us to have the discussion, but the HR generalist is currently in this appropriations that we received today.
Yes.
The rec director position as a full-time is not.
Correct.
It's still funded at that, whatever that was, $7,500.
Nine, about $9,300.
$9,000, yeah, $9,300, so it's still funded at that level.
In the appropriations for this resolution.
Your current appropriations that you have, and before you here, there were not sufficient resources to take that rec director position to the full amounts.
I see, that's an important piece of information to know.
I, I, that's a question I have, because there were not, so, we had discussion about the, the carryover, the original, whatever, I don't have those.
2.7.
2.7 left over.
It was the number we were working with.
After the, after, after the reserve funds out, we had 2.7 to work with, right?
That's what was the number we were discussing Saturday.
Right, so, out of, you're saying out of that 2.7, there's not sufficient resources to cover that position?
Let me, let me, let me give you a little correction here. So 2.7 is the residual you had left available.
Yes.
You have to take into account the estimated revenues, that is substantially more, to the tune of about $10 million. So you have to put that residual dollars you had, and all new money, we call it new money, because it's our new revenues coming in, you put those two together, and there's the most that you can appropriate in the general fund, or in, in any fund, for all practical, but this is general here, for most of what you're talking about.
Right.
So you don't start with just 2.7, and that's all you have, I mean, your general fund is about $13 million total right now, so you can see, you've already taken that 2.7, Mr. Miller, and brought that in to get to that number.
But that was the working number we were using in a public meeting to discuss if we could afford various.
Yes.
And we had, and part of the discussion was the HR generalist and a, a full-time rec director, and I, my recollection is that that, that was roughly $700,000, and we left that meeting, it felt like that, that, that was within our resources, so what's, respectfully, what's changed between now and then that we don't have the resources to fund that?
So your dollars, the dollars that you're, you were working with substantially, you, you, they don't all show up in one single line account, okay? So health insurance goes to health insurance, pensions, so on, so forth, all the different categories go where they need to go, but in putting everything in that I had to work with, it was totally exhausted and thereafter, it's the only position that did not get the full funding that you folks were looking for. Now, whether or not we can continue to fund that at some point in time during the calendar year, you're thinking about, we're, we already know that any of these new positions that you folks worked on a week ago, and by the way, I think you did an excellent job in your, in your deliberations, is, is that we're probably going to be at least four, maybe five months perhaps, before any of those positions would be here, we haven't spent any of that money for that purpose, so there's where you can see where we're going to make a trade-off between what we have not yet utilized, to the point of what we will be using, okay, so you're going to have, you'll have some residuals still left over when we get done, because we know those are not going to get implemented tomorrow.
So, let's assume this amendment that I've created passes, the salary is currently set at $7,450, this would raise what it is in the budget to $20,000, if possible.
If I'm correct, Mrs. Keener, I think $9,300 is what's on the pending ordinance already on the books.
Okay, I'm looking at age a lot, I don't know.
That would be the resources that you're talking about for appropriation purposes.
Okay.
Keep in mind that there was already an, a interim appropriations ahead of that.
All right, thank you.
So you're only seeing the residual part?
All right, thanks.
Yeah, good question.
All right, so, so Terry, what you're saying is, is with what we discussed on that last Saturday.
Yes.
When we walked away, it was roughly $700,000, a little less, like $650,000 or $660,000. That includes funding the HR generalist position, and all of, and every one of those other positions that we talked about.
That's correct.
So that's the street technician, the park technicians.
Yep.
Assistant fire chief. I don't have, I mean, I have to dictate them, it's accurate. That's all of the positions but that one.
Yes.
And do we have, what I hear you saying is we don't have the funds for that, fund that fully, do we have the funds under her amendment to, to increase the funding of that position to the $20,000?
Right.
And then discuss later, when the position description is done, whether or not that should be a full-time position?
Right, again, you'll still going to have, you're going to have residual dollars still sitting around at the beginning of January till whenever these positions get filled, that won't be utilized, probably do it, so what would we do? We'd trade those dollars, let's say the generalist doesn't get here till May, for example, I'm just going to give a conversation here, so January through May, or July, or May, January through March, April, excuse me, is no utilization, so we haven't spent any of those dollars, we could reallocate those back over into your rec director's position.
But as.
You need to remember in future years, it'll be there, and this year, we'll have residual funds to pick it up.
Right.
But we won't, if, if, once they're hired.
Once they're there, that's the thing.
Follow years.
Yes.
So, so this is completely new information?
Yes.
Than what we had?
Well, I wouldn't have known, I wouldn't have known that until I came back. And took all of your analysts' information, and analyzed it, and got them into the segregation system where they need to go.
Okay.
For you folks on your worksheet, it was nice and easy to say, oh, this was the dollars, I have to take those and put those in different buckets to make them all fit where they need to be. Because where are we on the amendment to the amendment? Are we ready to vote on that?
It's been moved to second, I believe.
Yes.
So one more question, I'm sorry, it's very confusing, but if we passed the budget without any amendments in it, that rec director full-time position isn't funded?
Correct.
That's, that's very different, okay.
But what would have to happen is when we decide to hire the person and have a job description, we'd have to have something about appropriations.
A transfer.
Yeah.
Yeah, make a transfer.
A transfer.
So, so the second to the second amendment that Jay made is to strike the two, number ones and two of Amber, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if we were to strike that completely.
You'd be left with three, four, and five.
We would be left with three, four, and five.
As amended.
Three, as, as from the first amendment.
Right.
Four and five as previously amended.
Yes.
And in effect, that leaves us with what the original amendment is, where there's a full-time generalist position that's funded?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Am I correct in that?
Yes.
And then a part-time position, or rec director.
Just the current one?
Yes, just the current one.
That's right.
I, okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, I have a question, why was the rec director a position that we don't have the money for, just generally, in, in general, you know?
When I'm, you know, when you're putting things together, as, funding as much as you could possibly can, if you're looking for a full-time position, it's very difficult not to fully fund a full-time position that you're wanting to add, in our rec director, we already have a position and a salary already established, I recognize the council can correct that and amend to make that whatever they would like to be, if we have the, the resources to work with, and that's the challenge that, that you run into when you're talking about how big this pie is really, really is, and it doesn't take long to eat it up, you know, it, it, once you put the dollars to there, it's really, really tight to keep things going.
I, I mean, we, we can have, this is all new tonight, and it's just, I'm kind of like going, trying to figure this out on the fly, which is not good when you're dealing with millions of dollars here.
We can come back and correct.
We can.
Line accounts.
Yeah, so I, I, I would, I'm going to just speak in favor of getting this rec director full-time, because I do believe, and Mr. Sayers' argument on Saturday was that if this person will get sponsors to help fund these buildings in our parks, they will pay for theirs themselves. We're using, we're using our citizens' tax dollars right now to cover these, you know, the maintenance of these fields and paint buildings that we're actually not even doing, so if this person can come in and raise money, so that those things are kept up to date, and then even raise more money to make sure that they are kept up each year after that, they are going to pay for themselves.
That's right.
So I, I think whether this is, this is not going to be in the budget tonight, but we need to, we need to get this in the budget, this needs, this is a worthy position, because they're going to pay for themselves.
Can I ask you to follow up to that, Terry? Do we have the funding to create that position at $20,000 for the part-time position?
Depending upon whether or not, and how fast the new positions get created, I really think that's going to take a little bit of time before that actually occurs.
I think the difficult thing there, Mike, is that, then now you're going to ask that person to do more as a part-time person, and it's just like what we do with every position, even at my place of employment, we give them more work, but we don't, you know, we're giving this person more money, this person's got another full-time job right now. So you can't pay them more and have them work another 10, 10 or 15 hours a week, that they probably don't have.
I was thinking it's basically just increasing the compensation for work that they're currently doing.
I mean, if we're just going to increase the compensation, we're going to give this person like a 55, 60% raise, right?
So the amendment to the amendment to the amendment is to strike one and two, it's been first and seconded.
That's what we're voting on right now, as we're going to strike one and two.
Yes, that's all that we're discussing right now.
Let's call the question.
Question's been called, we need to vote on, it takes two-thirds to call the question, is there a second to calling the question?
Second.
Okay, can you call, call the rolls, if we have two-thirds to. By calling the question means we're stopping debating.
A yes means we take it out, a no means we put it in.
Mrs. Seville?
So yes means we take it out.
No, no, no. Stop debating. Stop debate.
Oh, we're stopping the debate?
Yes, yes.
Yes means stop the debate.
Right now.
Yes, then I want to stop.
This is how we all.
I just want to stop.
She's on overtime, I'm telling you. Yes, Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, by majority, seven to zero, we called the question, so now we vote, we go right to a vote, Mr. Hill, we're now voting.
What are we voting on?
We're voting on the amendment.
Yes takes it out, no leaves it in.
Yes takes it out, no means leave it in, right?
Yes means you are striking the two lines. Yes means you are striking the two lines that Amber has originally asked to be amended. No means that they remain in, okay?
Yes means take it out, no means leave it in.
So yeah, just, just to clarify that, yes would mean-
Take it out.
Remove it from the amendment.
Means strike it.
And on Saturday, we talked about the HR generalist position being somebody we needed, so.
Correct.
All right. All right. The question's been called.
Mrs. Seville. Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
No, just to be different.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Okay. By a vote of six to one, the amendment to the strike one and two has been approved. Now we're gonna vote on-
Well, now we're back on the-
Original amendment, as amended.
Well, back to the original motion as, yeah, as amended.
With the mic version.
Yes, well, version three, actually.
So one and two are gone.
Yes.
One and two are gone.
Three, four, and five are still-
Now, now we can discuss the amendment as already amended with striking one and two.
Yes.
Any other discussion before we vote? We've killed this horse.
Yep.
Mr. Hill. Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The, the amendment has been approved as amended twice, and-
I don't even know where we are.
So now we're, now we're back, Mrs. Woods, to the original motion, as amended.
All that's it, then what we just did?
We have to pass it.
Now we gotta pass it.
Stick with me here.
Do I need to take another, make another motion?
Yes.
To pass resolution 2024-21 as amended, amended, amended.
Second.
Any discussion?
Glad I came into you.
That's a big one.
Just for the sake of clarity, can you let everybody know what we're voting, what we're voting on?
Fifty-seven minutes.
Just to make sure.
We're voting on the, the budget as submitted by Mr. Scott with the three additions, the three specific changes are the reduction of the demo costs, your page number two, which is the, the 2024 public buildings and lands, budget amended, and then page, and then your first page, which is remove $90,000, all right?
Okay.
That is what we are voting on.
That's what we're voting on, and in effect, that leaves that HR generalist position still there. Okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill. Question, who seconded this, that you just, Tammy just-
Amber.
You didn't, okay, thank you. Okay, I will call the roll. Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
The resolution as amended, amended, amended is approved.
You can follow that.
I didn't even want to say praise the Lord, so that matters.
Thank you, scouts, we appreciate your, your. You had, you had a session, Robert's Rules of Order.
I say badge him right now.
Congratulations on your badge.
Yeah, you earned that one.
Yeah, give them their citizenship in the community badge tonight. They're married today. Okay.
Go to school tomorrow.
Now we move on to ordinances. We have none for third reading. For second reading, we have several. Ordinance number 2024 day 01, Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 01, an ordinance to accept the vacation of an undeveloped platted alley in the city of Mount Vernon, Knox County, Ohio, and declaring any emergency.
It says Mr. Hager might think that's not correct.
His voice got really high.
Hey, somebody, what do you want to do?
Yes.
Oh, I was waiting for the president.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. I'm gonna give this its second reading and have a 10-minute committee meeting at the next meeting.
All right. This ordinance receives a second reading. Now we move to ordinance number 2024 day 02. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 02, an ordinance to accept the vacation of an undeveloped alley in the city of Mount Vernon, Knox County, Ohio, and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Keener. I will also give this ordinance its second reading and do another 10-minute committee meeting.
These are separate meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty simple, so.
Yeah.
Well, can we do five for the second one?
Do fifteen for both.
Do fifteen and put them both together?
Fifteen for them both.
Yeah, there you go.
Now we move to ordinance number 2024 day 03, Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 03, an ordinance fixing the compensation and benefits of certain employees of the Mount Vernon Municipal Court effective January 1, 2024, and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
We'll give this its second reading.
This ordinance receives a second reading. We move now to ordinance number 2024 dash 04. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 04, an ordinance fixing the compensation and benefits of certain employees of the Mount Vernon Municipal Court effective January 1, 2024, and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
We'll give ordinance 2024 dash 04 its second reading.
Receives a second reading. We now move to ordinance number 2024 day 05, Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 05, an ordinance fixing the compensation and benefits of certain employees of the Mount Vernon Municipal Court effective January 1, 2024, and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
We'll also give this its second reading.
The final ordinance of this evening is ordinance number 2024 day 06, Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2024 dash 06, an ordinance fixing the compensation and benefits of certain employees of the Mount Vernon Municipal Court effective January 1, 2024, and declaring any emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
We'll give it its second reading, and can I get a 15-minute committee meeting? We'll discuss these four together.
I think I, I've got that already.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We now move to remarks of the administration. Mayor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. President and counsel. Anyway, I don't have much to relay tonight, although I did, counsel, you probably noticed, I did have a meeting with the Ohio Municipal League Executive Director last week, and I asked him to bring the legislative agenda, the priorities, as well as just some more information for you. Ohio Municipal League is one of our, it's one of our very active lobbyists for municipalities and villages at state level, and so I know some of you have taken training with them, I've taken some training with them, and will be taking some training coming up with them. They're a great resource. Anyway, I just wanted you to have those. Also, you see some of the art packs that we have been pulling up of our parking garage and our plaza building, just again to stress the urgency as far as what we are doing. This one almost, this, this concrete dagger, if you will, nearly caused a problem with one of our, our city trucks, Mr. Hinkle's truck. We were able to get it in, in time though, so, anyway. First time that's happened in a while, but you just never know, that's, I know we all hate putting money into that building that we're gonna end up tearing down, but we have no other place to go right now. And so, anyway, we'll be talking much more about that this next year. Anyway, that is all I have this evening, Mr. President, counsel, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sayers.
Thank you for your participation tonight, counsel. We took appropriations in a radically different way this year, and I think we're really showing a commitment to investing. I'm speaking a lot enough, okay. We're taking a different approach to investing in the city, really squeezing this orange for all it's worth, and I think the community will appreciate that. So whatever comes out of this, I think, I think it'll be something to be proud of. Ultimately, I think the mayor alluded to this earlier, we are in the safety service office creating a municipal public safety committee. That will be comprised of several of our department heads, from the relevant department heads, and people, or folks in, in certain positions from out the community. We will ask for two council members from relevant committees to be on that. There will be a municipal public services committee as well. Again, two council members from relevant committees, and then there is, as we've discussed prior, a municipal tech board that we will ask for one council member to be a part of. So I'll be reaching out to discuss those things and what the, what the role of those committees and commissions are, and we will address issues to make sure that there are no more concrete daggers in Mr. Hinkle's truck. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Mr. Starr.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Mr. Braun.
No, thank you.
Mr. Ruckman.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
You have a amendment to that, Mr. Braun? Mrs. Seville.
Oh, I just wanna wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day, and I hope everybody has somebody to hug and to love, and that's all.
Mrs. Woods.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Severance.
I'm not sure I can articulate this well enough, but finding out all of this information just in the last 15 minutes is not very easy. We're, we're talking about a lot of money, people, positions, and to just get this information last minute, and I was under the understanding that from a week ago that we had the money to approve all these positions, and now we just are learning that we don't. So I, I get it, but to find out during the legislative session, rather than maybe even two or three or four days before we get to here tonight, I think we gotta figure that out, because to do all this on the fly is not fair to any of us and to our citizens. So I think we need to, we get, we need to get that figured out a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
No, I agree. I think the budget process needs to start sooner next year. It could start in July, as far as I'm concerned, but it should definitely start in September, October, with, with discussions with section heads between council and the city, and with the mayor's office, and with Tanner. I think that should definitely all start earlier next year, with the hope that we don't have an interim budget. I think we should work hard. I have not done this before, but there was a lot, we learned completely new information tonight, at this process, because of the process is why we learned stuff tonight, as tedious as it was, and I can say, I don't think I've been through anything this tedious and nerve-wracking before, but this, this was, and, but I think this process needs to start sooner next year, and it would be better, much better, because I think there was a lot happened between January and now. And it's hard for, I think, citizens to see exactly what happened tonight. It looked a little chaotic, but it was processed, Robert's Rules of Order, and Bruce ran us through, and Rob ran us through that quite well. And so, yes, but this needs to start sooner next year to alleviate these types of problems and issues. The work stuck out.
Thank you. Mrs. Keener.
Everybody knows I love Robert's Rules of Orders. There is a community member who asked to speak, and I think we skipped over the public comments time, so if we could just give her three minutes to have her time, since she waited through our deliberation, I would give my time to her.
Hi, I'm Tony Kent, and I live at 202 Maplewood Avenue on the west end of town. Sorry. I just wanted to ask about the dog park. Who brought that up? Has anybody been asking people on the west end about that? $90,000 or $100,000 is a lot for that, and that could be allocated towards maybe cleaning up the river. You know, that would go a long ways. Right now, that green space is utilized for a lot of different things. People do walk their dogs, the soccer people play soccer down there, the kids take their power wheels down there and drive around, 'cause it's fenced in. It's used for a lot of purposes, not just a dog park. So I think it would be in the best interest to maybe ask some people down there. The biggest thing that needs to be put down there is a sign, maybe, that people need to clean up after their dog, because it's utilized for so many different things right now, and it's a good space that we have down there on the west end. $90,000 will go for a lot down to clean the river. I'm, we're supposed to be federally mandated to do that, 15 feet on either side, $90,000 would go a long way, especially in May, when we're having canoe people and kayak people stay at Riverside Park. Don't you think they'd like it to be cleaned on either side and not have, you know, tents and encampments that they'd have to see? That would make our river look better towards people, they could maybe tell more people to come, and bring more money into the city. I just think that that $90,000 should be utilized better than a dog park, because we already have one. And is there any money allocated in this for the general fund for the dike and the river? Is there a line for that this year? I hope that there would be, besides me asking for the $90,000, especially when you guys were wanting updates every three months about how it's going. At least cleaning it up, $90,000 would go a long way to hire that gentleman from Centerburg again to clean down the weeds and clean up the, have somebody clean up all the encampments. You know, our river is great, not only the dike being safe and being cleaned up, but that's an opportunity to bring money into the city. People like to fish, people like to kayak, people like to canoe. If it's clean and we have a, a body of people coming and staying, wouldn't we want to represent that the best we could and present that to them the best we could? So hopefully, you guys-
I can answer your question.
They're dying to answer you, Tanya.
Yes.
We do have, we are planning to use some of the stormwater funds to continue that effort that we did, the cleanup along the levee there. We also will continue to work on the elevation study. We have to pull our consultant and team up of that, but part of the thing that we have to do with the, before we start going and asking FEMA for help, is we need an incomplete inventory of all the structures in the west end, of all the structures in that floodplain that have been deemed in that floodplain, and so we're, we're, we're still working on that, we're inching our way, but we have, we're leveraging some of the other things in Riverside Park with the community development block. You and, you both were at the, at the community meeting a few weeks ago. Sorry. Anyway, so, yeah, we are, we are planning to continue that cleanup, and, yeah.
I hope that you would reconsider the $90,000 on the dog.
I believe, I believe they put the dog down if you-
The amendment to the amendment, but I'm glad that you guys did all that, because ordinances last year were 60% in an emergency basis, so I'm glad to see the second reading and stuff, because 60% of ordinances being passed on an emergency basis is really not a democracy. And we, as taxpayers, pay you guys a salary. We don't have the luxury of, of, of voting on our own salaries to get increased. So, you know, I hope you all keep that in mind, and that people in the west end really do not want a dog park, because that green space is utilized for so many different things right now, for children.
I really don't think it would get used. I really don't. I'll just answer this. Tonight, the decisions that were made at council tonight has left over, over $100,000 in the public lands and parks funds.
Well, however, it did include the parkour equipment, which spent $150,000, so.
So, we gotta sort that out, but we, the, the dog park and there's some other funds that are in there.